We're live. There we are. Alright, um. First of all, let's uh, I mean, let's start with the introductions until uh, everyone joins. You guys can see the stream? You guys, you think this is okay? Did I make it a little bit bigger? What do you think? Is it okay?
I can still not see your scream, your stream.
Probably, probably takes like 10-15 seconds. There is like a natural delay. Uh, can you guys hear me on stream? And uh, can you guys hear yourselves? Because usually I use the, I use the, the mic. This is first time I'm on my... I guess you can hear me, right?
Yeah, I can hear you on the stream.
Can you hear yourself as well? It'll be like, after like 10 seconds, something. Alright, I think we're all set.
I don't know if I can hear myself on the stream.
Can anyone else hear? Let me check.
Yeah, I can hear myself, but it's, it's pretty quiet.
It's quiet, okay. I'm just gonna give you guys a little boost. How about now? Someone? Oh, okay, I think I got it. I got this. I got this. I'm gonna do it from here. And I have to uh, manually do it from Discord. So, uh, Jesus, can you, can you, can you introduce yourself while I fix your uh... So, let's all, let's do, let's go through this. Can you introduce yourself so I can fix the, also your, your audio?
I'm Jesus.
Yep.
My name is Peter. I'm from Greece. Live in Ksanthi. It's north. Um, I play cash games. Main, my main game is cash games. I love entities. I love sit and goes. Okay, I can share myself also from the stream. Um, not much. New streamer. I stream 3 months or something. That's all. I'm 30 years old, yes.
Thank you for uh...
And, and I, and I have a girlfriend. Because being a poker player without a girlfriend, what is Matrix?
Yeah, I remember. I used to have a joke there. Like, it's homeless.
I have one. I like it.
So you have a home as well?
Yeah.
So, alright, uh, first of all, thanks for, you know, for uh, for being with us. For being part of this study session. It's good to have you.
I say, uh, a big thank, a big thanks to you, Matrix, for the invitation and everything.
I would also like to uh, thank uh, you know, obviously Scooter who's uh, who's also, you know, willing to put himself out there uh, and sharing his game with, with us and the rest of the stream. Uh, so Scooter, how, uh, wanna tell, tell us a little bit about you as well? How long have you been playing? You know, what are your goals are?
Yeah, so I'm 34 years old. Um, I'm playing, I played poker before, um, 10 years ago, but then I was a depositing player, a fun player. Um, I started back last year, in June, I think. Um, I had a little bit of good run and I had a pretty good bankroll. Um, but I busted it in 3 months, so I lost almost everything. Um, and then I restarted and now I'm taking it more seriously, uh, my bankroll management. Um, I studied through, learned through poker first and now I'm, now I bought the Raise Your Edge course, so... I'm trying to become a better player and that's why we're doing this study session now. Um, we're gonna go over my hands from a deep run I had in a 750 deep stack on poker stats.
Which we were railing for just a little bit that day.
Yes.
And, you know...
The final, the final table is gonna be painful, so...
Yeah, uh, no spoilers though. Uh, we won't be spoiling it for the guys who will stick around until then. Uh, also, also, I mean, from what you said from your introduction, there are 2 points that are uh, that I wanted to stress out firstly. And uh, how important bankroll management is in this whole process. So like you said, you had a couple of good, great results and then you said you, you kind of uh, uh, speed away. So that, that just stresses out how important uh, bankroll managers, management really is. And uh...
Yeah, so I had around, I had around 5k of a bankroll. Um, and then I went up in stakes. And I thought I was the best player in the world because yeah, it went well and, but I wasn't. And I wasn't ready to go up in stakes. So I, my game, I was over folding like a maniac. Just because I couldn't understand the, um, the aggression from the regular, from, from the regulars and I was losing a lot.
And you know, most people, like, I'm not gonna say most people, but a lot of people would probably be in the same position you were. And they would not even understand that they were over folding and they were, you know, they were not ready for those stakes. So understanding uh, um, where your gameplay is, is a, is a, is really, you know, a great step into moving forward. You know, into becoming a better player because that's, or, that's what we all wanna do. Become the best version of ourselves, right?
Yep, indeed.
And the second thing, uh, but we will come back later to that. The second thing I just wanna to mention, also because I just uh, uh, made, made this affiliate agreement with Raise Your Edge. I would like you at one point to tell us, uh, you know, with how, why you decided to go for uh, Raise Your Edge? And what uh, this course, uh, what do you think about this course? But we'll get to that after. Let's go ahead and also introduce and thank Zombie, my, my dear friend Zombie who... I'm gonna give you a little bit of a story here before I, you know, before I thank Zombie for being part of this. When I first started playing, uh, by the way, hi Zombie! Man, thank you so much for being a part of this study session. It's uh, it's, and I am not exaggerating for saying that. It's a privilege to have you around, you know, as a friend, as a friend of the stream, as a friend and as a, you know, uh, and even today, you know, doing that. I really appreciate that. So, a little bit of a story. I mean, if I go back and, and see my conversations that I had with Zombie, you know, back when I first started this challenge. I saw him, you know, being active and helping people and, you know, in the DW community. And I took the, the courage, you know, as a new player. I didn't know anyone then. And I talked to him about the hand that I thought, you know, you know, I wanted to hear his opinion or someone's that's, that was better than me. And he, he, he went and told me some things, you know, uh, during that conversation. That really helped me, you know, feel more confident in my game and decisions and everything. And I don't know if it's a coincidence and I wasn't even, you know, I was, I was, I wasn't even, you know, nearly the player I am right now. Not saying that I am something special now, but I was, I was like a fun player in progress of trying to learn, let's say, back then. But the next day I went on and I won the Big 550, you know? Do you remember that, Zombie?
Yeah, I do, I do. It's right as well.
So uh, how about you? Tell us a little bit about you, man, if you want.
Yeah, so I'm 21. Um, I play mainly like everything from 5 to 215 dollars at the moment. Average buy-in is around 50, I would say. Yeah, played poker for like 4 years already. Yeah, I love the game. Try to be a professional at the moment.
How's that working for you?
Decent. Made decent profit this year already. So yeah, let's see.
What do you, what do you think, uh, like to, you know, to starting players? What, what would you, what would you advise a starting player who wants to build a bankroll? Or who is in the process of, of building a bankroll? Or players like me and Scooter and uh, you know, like, like, we, we do have a decent knowledge of the game? We're working on ourselves. What would you advise? What would you think like, uh, you know, what would your advice be? That would help us move forward to the direction we wanna go?
Watch actively a lot of streams. Like, don't just passively watch them and like, really think about every spot the streamer is doing. And then like, think what would I do, you know? And then take notes if they do something different and sizings and stuff like that. And also I would like ask other micro players and review some hands with them. Just like to get their input and give your opinions on the hand as well, you know? Just to get some feedback.
So, so, so from, from what you're saying, I, I understand the bottom line is you're, you're telling people, stay hungry for the game. And have your eyes and ears open, right?
Yeah, sure.
Like, like, don't think because somebody is a fun player that you have nothing to, to uh, gain from making a session with them. Like, you wanna understand fun players too, right? Because...
Yeah, that's true. You need to know what they think about the hand, you know?
Because you will be up against this type of player like 1 million times throughout your career, your poker career. So you wanna know how they think as well. That's good insight. That's a good insight. Hello to Point Click Shop and Ace. Ace, welcome you guys. Thanks for being here with us. So, shall we get started, guys?
I'm ready.
Yep.
Alright, let's go. Again, this is a 750 deep stack. Uh, we are reviewing Scooter's uh, uh, tournament, deep run in this tournament. There will be some uh, interesting spots, some three bet, pots in position, out of position. Some big blind, small blind plays. Hassan, how you doing, man? Welcome. We're live, no delay, so...
Oh yeah, okay.
Feel free, feel free, you guys to uh, I mean, from the chat, whenever you uh, you can keep skipping hands, Scooter.
Yeah, okay.
Don't mind me talking. Don't let me distract you guys.
Queen 3 suited on the big blinds, so... Yeah, 3-bet call, I think it's an easy fold.
Yeah.
What do you do on this spot?
I think this is a mistake. I mean, this is one of the first ones I already see, so I, I think I should just complete here.
Yeah.
Um, see a flop and then...
It's too, it's too, we're so deep and it's too cheap, isn't it?
Yeah, I should just complete and see a flop and uh, if, if we hit, we can make a pot of it and if we don't, we just fold easy.
What do you think, uh, Zombie?
Yeah, we should just fold. Let's see a flop.
Do you have any faults here?
7-2 off is a fault, but every suited 10, for example, is a call. 7-2 suited would be a call. Just see a flop. Price is really good.
Yeah, I agree and I think...
Like 7-1?
The fact that, the fact that the button just, just calls as well, um, says that he's not the best player, I think.
And he's a fun player. And he limped the hand before that, so wanna play versus him.
I think we should indeed try to play more hands with them. So I'm gonna tell you this, um, the player you see here is before I bought the Raise Your Edge course. So I bought it um, this week. So you will see, I mean, there are a lot of spots I already know that I missed, um...
It's okay, it's okay. We want, we want to see spots uh, like uh...
Yeah, yeah, sure. We wanna see mistakes.
Yeah, we wanna see, it's not actually mistakes, but we wanna see spots that are interesting to discuss about. It's not about, you know, whether you made the right decision or not, but it's about how did you think about what you did? Why, what was your thought process? And what's the, let's say, uh, best player there?
So here, yep, indeed.
Who is, who is talking? It's uh, we have Zombie, we uh, we have uh, Scooter, yes? And we also have uh, ex-Jesus, uh, who is uh, quiet, very quiet at the moment.
So here as well, Jack 7 off, um, I think is just an open. I'm not sure.
Because we are very deep, we don't really make, but, but opening is fine if you think like they play too weak and don't three bet enough. That's the main thing. If they three bet enough, you have to fold a lot, you know?
Yeah, we, we don't have any information on them yet, so, I mean, you know, in the fields on stars, you...
I think it's fine.
Lower stakes, you don't have any, any information on most of the players.
You know, uh, Raise Your Edge uh, suggests uh, a limp fault.
Limp fault?
Actually, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was looking at the, I was looking at the small blind mistake. It's a fault according to Raise Your Edge. Jack 8 is uh, is an open fault. It's like, why would...
It's uh, bottom range, I think.
Yeah. Bottom range is Jack 8 off.
Jack 8 off is the bottom of the range, yeah.
Yeah, 100 big blinds.
So yeah, we go forwards. I spin off, I just flat, um, when we're on more than 100 big blinds deep. I don't see a real reason to three bet. We hit top pair, we bet. Uh, I go pretty big for value. Um, I don't know about sizing. Uh, I think that's also one of my, my weak points that I don't know when I should bet how big where.
I think this is a spot where we wanna bet small, just because we have like this spot pretty much locked up if he checks. Like, he didn't bet, he opened and then checked. So his range is very weak. I guess like a lot of like 8s and 7s and 5s and like maybe a queen 10 type of hand. But like aces and kings he would bet, a set he would bet, right? Flush throw he would bet, so his range is very weak. And if he go that big, he just might straight up fold pocket 8s. That's pretty bad for us. So we just wanna keep him in the pot, like 3.5x, 3.5 big blinds, keep him in the pot and yeah.
It's a good point.
But we can three bet this hand.
We also, we also block flush throws, like, not flush.
We have the ace.
Yeah, because we have the ace of spades.
Oh, you, I agree. You would three bet here?
A pre-flop?
Mix, mix three bet and call. Both are fine. If they're all suited, wanna rather three bet. And we're so deep that we just can three bet a lot.
If you have uh, Ben says, if you have weak players behind, you flat. If you have uh, good legs, you three bet.
Good three bets. I think if he, if the opener is a fun player, I'd rather three bet to make the pot bigger. Cause he will make more mistakes like that, if the pot is bigger. But I don't mind the flat, but the only thing that sucks if he gets squeezed, we have to call, you know? It's not that great.
Yeah.
Because we always three bet aces and kings and queens, right?
I prefer to three bet pre-flop most of the times. You have a huge stack. You have more than 100 big blinds.
I think both are fine. Depends on when, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I, I think Jesus has the most experience in 100 big blinds play because he's a cash game player and he all, only plays 100 big blinds.
I think that's uh, most of the times.
Cash game, we always three bet, right? Because we have to pay rake on every hand we play basically. In tournaments, we don't.
Yeah, yeah, I agree totally.
Yeah, so the Raise Your Edes, the, no, the Raise Your Edes ranges also say sometimes three bets, sometimes just call.
Yeah.
And then call a, call a squeeze when the pre-flop aggressor folds, if you would just call.
Yeah, I'm Cypriot Zez. Thank you for the follow, by the way. I, I try not to interact a lot because I don't want to uh, uh, interrupt the guys. But thanks for the follow, man.
So what we can take off here is just the sizing should be on the, on the flop. I should bet smaller, try to keep like 7s, 8s, 9s in the pot.
Yeah.
Okay.
King Jack from the button, you know? Or Jack 10 in diamonds. Might just call one. It's the big size, I fold.
Okay.
What, uh, I, I don't know if I missed it, guys. Uh, what, what would be your sizing here? 2.5, Zombie?
About 3.5 to 4, because we are so deep. And we are, like, the button is still in the pot. Through heads up, we can go even a bit small, but is the button still in the mix, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, you wanna make it, you know...
Yeah, or big plans would be.
You, you wanna make it enough to get a call by weaker hand at this point?
Yeah.
Uh, Ben asked, uh, so are you betting small with range? And queen 6-2s?
I wouldn't say range, just because we are not the pre-flop aggressor, right? We're the flat caller. And the button's still, I mean, the button is pretty capped because he didn't three bet pre-flop. But still, I don't think we bet range, but we can bet a decent amount. Because I feel like the opener will always see bet his strong hands. Which makes a bet big better, you know? But yeah.
Alright.
Hey.
Oh, you're also Cypriot Zez. Thank you, bro. Nice, also, also significant, nice as though.
So the next hand I played was ace 5 off from under the gun plus 1. Uh, ace 5 suited, sorry. Uh, just a standard raise, get 3 bets, fold. I think that's okay.
We could mix in the 4 bet, but, you know, in these fields, I just rather fold.
Yeah, they don't, they don't three bet enough, but you can also, I mean, calling uh...
Calling is not terrible.
Yeah, it's good. You're, you're deep. You have a, you have a hand that you can have the nuts, because it's suited. The good playability as well. I mean, playability is, yeah.
Yeah, it's really important, 100 big blinds deep, right?
I think most of the times, uh, blinds don't mess around with the range there.
Yeah.
Very bad from a small, from the small blind. Most of the times, I think it's uh...
It's pretty strong. It's pretty strong. But we don't have information.
I destroy the biggest range.
We don't have information about this player, though.
I like, I like to call.
Yeah.
Then ace 2 in the big blind, yeah. Open under the gun, the 3 bet, so I just fold.
Yeah.
Here again, 7-4 suited, I should always complete, which I didn't. And then fold to the raise of the, of the big blind, I think. Um, open raise from under the gun, um, call from the cutoff, uh, Jack 9 off. Um, I don't think it's a call.
Yeah, just fold.
If it was suited, I would call, definitely. Offsuit, I just fold. But I don't even know if it's, if suited, if it's a call multi-way.
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, we can call. We can call, just because we are in the position where it's...
Oh my god, Mike! Wait, what? Zez, thank you for the, thank you for the tier 1 sub, man. Thank you so much. Welcome. Wow, that was fast! Uh, thank you, man. Hope you enjoy those emotes. Welcome to the, to the Matrix.
The 4-5 half is just a shift to an open from...
Appreciate it, man. Nice, I got laughing. It's Friday still, it's Friday still.
About the king 7 suited hand, I have a question. So, um, this guy limps like 75% of hands he plays. Uh, you already know he's a big fun player. Um, king 7 suited, do you limp behind or would you raise? So I fold, which is probably a mistake, but would you...
Fold or raise? We never limp behind.
Yeah.
We just wanna either fold or fold.
Yeah, fold or raise. And if you raise, you do a raise to 4 or 3 and a half or...
Or 3.5.
3.5. Uh, yeah, what if you wanna raise out of position, a linker? Is it, what do you do? 4.5? 4.5, what?
Depends on the stack, you know, how many big runs we have. But run 4, 4.5, sounds fine. Yeah, I would always ice a raise king 8 in that spot. King 7 is close. I mean, I probably would be tempted just because he's so bad and we get a lot of money from him, you know?
He's really bad.
So just play with him in position with the stronger range. But I, I don't mind folding. Both are fine. But I wouldn't fold king 8, ever.
Okay.
But how do we know he's bad?
Because he limps a lot.
You just know, you just know by he was playing 78% of hands out of 18 hands. I mean, that's just way too much. He's only opening 17.
Because we don't have a lot of hands on him.
Yeah, but if you...
Yeah, but he limped, right?
Yeah, he limped. And we have 18 hands and he limped like 15 already.
Oh, okay, okay.
Then you know already that he's just bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, I also would not make any conclusion out of 18 hands, but if you see something like this, you just, you just know it already. It's a standard fold here.
Did I just see a notification on the... Thank you for keeping the channel notifications, the Discord channel notifications on, Scooter. That's an honor, man!
Ah, yeah, yeah, always. Um, so do you complete, uh, Zombie, do you complete here with a 10-2 suited?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just because you get a really good price to complete and just see flop. Okay. So not punished, luckily. Um, yeah, that's already 3rd time we see this now, um...
Still fold. Yeah, here, again, we just limp behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, I don't know how many tables you play at once?
Um, I think it was on a Saturday, so it's probably... So I also note, I also noticed going over the hands that I just miss, um, spots due to too many tables. So I cut down to 6 now, so I'm not playing more than 6. Um, more so, yeah. I think it's uh, it has to do with that as well.
Yeah, I don't want to miss some spots, but...
Yeah, it's already the 3rd time. Um, yeah, it's just simple, complete here. I shouldn't make these mistakes.
It's a strong hand, you know? And you should be also crushing, uh, that guy's limping range, because he's limping 5, 6 suited. Uh, 7, 8. Some 9, 10s. Jack 9.
He also already played 8 out of 10 hands, so what is he now limping? I think the worst off-suited hands he's not, but I think everything suited almost is limping. Yeah, it's a, it's a, this, this should not happen, these are mistakes that I, that you shouldn't make, that I shouldn't make.
See it and you won't make it.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will definitely notice the spots, uh... Future. So yeah, 9, 4 off is a fold.
Yeah.
Off is a fold. Queen jack off, I think is a fold.
Yeah.
Behind, I think it's, just has not enough equity to continue.
Also because they're, you know, under the gun plus one, under the gun plus two.
What if it was suited?
Um, I think if it was suited, I think you can squeeze it. Because even queen jack against an under the gun plus one range, you have like 40% equity.
Like the caller, too, they could be crushing our range as well, like, uh, ace, queen, king, jack, or, you know?
Yeah, I think three-way, if you want to play queen jack suited, I think it's a, it's a squeeze to try to fold out. To go heads up, at least, or to just take the money.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I agree.
What would be your size, if you want to squeeze?
Uh, that's a good question.
I would go like 11. 11 big blinds.
That's a bit too big.
Yeah, that's big.
Too big.
Yeah, I would go like 8.5, 9-ish.
Like, you 3x, if it's like one guy, and you add maybe one or one and a half big blind for the other guy, something like that?
Yeah.
So, it would be 6.6, plus maybe one or two big blinds, yeah. 7.68. And you just fold to a jam, or four bet?
Yeah, of course, of course. I fold. 4, 8 fold. King 3 off is a fold. Ace, king and the big blinds. So I just call behind.
That's interesting.
Okay.
I hit a pair.
Okay, can you go back pre-flop?
Yes, of course, of course.
Why do you just call?
Um...
What's the reason?
It's a good question. Um...
You wanted to see the flop?
Yeah.
Uh, not especially, I mean... Yeah, you can four bet it, you can four bet it, and he has his 36 big blinds, so if he shoves, it doesn't matter, you just call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I would just four bet, shove or four bet, and then get it in. It's just, this hand performs pretty poorly, out of position. Like, if he hit our ace, okay, but then he, if he has like kings and we hit our ace, he doesn't lose a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know? And it's a micro, it's a 750, so he might like squeeze his queen, calls it off. Yeah. We just want to, and there's a, like a possibility that he bluffs now, and we shove, and he folds, and we get 18 big blinds. That's pretty big, like, 10 big blinds, I guess, because 750 is already in the pot here.
Yeah. Yeah, you just get 11 big blinds, pre-flop is always fine, I mean...
Yeah, very entry.
Uh, Ben is asking an interesting question, and it's a question, uh, that I always have, uh, that I also have. He goes, "Are you happy to get 60 big blinds in there with ace, king off?"
Well, I'm not high-fiving my friends, but I'm still like, I think it's the best play, better than call. Fold is out of the picture, you know?
Yeah.
What we could do is like do to, go to like 15 big blinds, and if the opener is shoving and the caller is shoving, then we can fold.
And you can fold, that was the question I would, I would ask, if the opener shoves, yeah, I feel for three bet and the opener shoves.
But wouldn't 15 give them like good odds to even just flat? So, you think 15 is still, you know?
I mean, it's a storm much with the stack then already. Like, if you go like 16, I guess you can go 16 or 17. You don't want to price yourself in.
Okay.
But if you go like 16, it's, we can still, we still have the stronger range if he calls, because he doesn't call aces and kings. Yeah, right?
And, and like, I would like to also ask, you know, like, uh, like Ben asked there, you know, if you're happy to get it in with 60 bigs. My question is, when do we stop? I mean, my question for, also for everyone to hear, uh, that's watching, when do we jam? Which stacks do we jam, or in these spots? And which, and which stacks do we, I mean, you pretty much answered it with your, you know, but when do you stop jamming ace, king off in these spots? Like 60, 70 big blinds?
You can also four bet folded.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we should ever shove here. We can three bet, but we should never shove. If we get shoved on, you can't fold, I think. Unless poker J, maybe if poker J shoves, you can say, okay, he has aces, kings, maybe queens. And then you end, I think then, your range does not well against aces, kings and queens. Then you could fold, but I don't think we are ever shoving 63 bigs here, now. So we three, we four bet, and if you get shoved on by doom, we call, and if you get shoved on by poker J, you can still fold or call.
See you, Zez. Thank you so much, man. Welcome to the family, and I'll be seeing you. Thanks for, uh, thanks for being here with us. I'm sure I'm gonna be seeing more of you. Sorry, guys, just ignore me. I, I just can't, uh... Uh, I think I can mute, so that's good. I think I can mute. Can you guys hear me now?
So Zombie, if poker J shoves and doom folds, do you call?
So, so I just figured out that I can mute and talk to you guys. I'm such a noob. So I had to interrupt them all the time.
Maybe four bet fold with ace king, like ace king is still value. We just pray for ace, king, queens, jacks, tens, you know?
So, Zez, thank you, man, thank you so much for... For the sub, man, appreciate it a lot.
Maybe just three bet, if you lose, you know?
Also, Spanos, Kozidio, thank you for the follow, Hile. Welcome to the stream.
But if both players get it, I can fold.
Man.
Okay.
Guys, if you have any questions, feel free, feel free to join me.
Do we want to play a flip at this point of the tournament?
I think this is a good spot to play, uh, to shove. Because let's not forget that we do crush their ranges, even with, like, like, uh, poker J here, you know, will open queen nine suited. This guy will three bet, uh, like king, queen, queen, jack suited, and things like that. I mean, we are, even, you know, pairs of like eights. Uh, but he could fold to a jam, like, I think, I think it's a good, it's a good jam here, right?
I think it's only four bet, we never jam here in this spot, right? We four bet, but we never jam.
It's a really micro play, and he rather calls like an all-in than a four bet, you know? He has like queen jack and just wants to gamble it up, he'd rather shove. Than him calling and seeing a flop and breaking, you know?
Yeah, it's true.
But, in general, I think four bet call is better, just to give him some rope, you know? To hang himself. Like, he can still make mistakes versus like my 16 or 17 four bet range. Whereas my all-in range, he just folds like jack 10 suited, you know?
Yeah, yeah, true. And maybe, yeah.
Nevertheless, it's a very interesting spot at this, you know? Let's see how it was played out.
Yep, so we hit top pair with top kicker, I mean, it's always good with ace king. Uh, check, he checks behind. Um, I check again. Um, he bets.
And we shove.
And he folds.
What do you think his range is on the turn, on the flop, if he checks back?
I think it's like... It's probably something like king, queen, it's, I don't think, I, maybe it's tens, jacks. Could also be tens, jacks, queens, I don't think queens, mm-hmm. Yeah, tens, jack, queens, kings could also be.
I think kings, I think kings and, and, I think kings and queens would probably call your, uh, your raise here, because we didn't jam, we just, just raised.
Maybe they do.
Yeah, but there is an ace on the flop, right? So I feel like it's the right, like, mindset. He probably has an, has a, like, kings, queens, jacks, tens, and he's really unhappy about the ace. And on the turn, he's probably, if we lead the turn, he's gonna call at least once, because he has kings, you know, he just has to see the river at least.
I mean, if they know we have ace king when we jam, they should...
And if he has like a bad ace, like ace five, or ace four, he wants to pot control now. And we, if we can, if we bet the turn, we can bet the river. But if he check, and he bets, and we call, for example, he can check back the river, which is really bad for us. Because if he checks like ace five, they would call two streets, but only puts in one street themselves, you know?
So here, I should...
The same thing is with kings and queens.
So on the turn, I should always lead.
You should lead, and if you check, which is like not terrible, but I don't love it, then you should never raise, just because you don't bluff. You have no bluffs.
No, yeah, that's correct.
You have never a hand that you cold call the three bet, and then check, and then check raise the turn with. And also his range is so weak, he, like, if he has ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, king, he's always gonna see bet, just to get value, you know? If he checks the turn, the flops, though, he doesn't really have those. He has like a bad ace, or a lot of like kings and queens and jacks and tens.
And maybe even a bad ace is just betting once on the flop?
Yeah. I mean, maybe he's pot controlling. But I feel like all his bluffs are betting on the flop. Like, if he has king, queen, of diamonds, he's just gonna bet the flop to barrel some turns, you know? Or like jack 10, he's not gonna check jack 10, because jack 10 doesn't win on show up.
So I should, uh, bet turn, and how big do you bet then? What would be your sizing here?
Around like 7, 8-ish.
Yeah, so, just, just under half pot.
Yeah, so we can shuffle the river.
Okay.
We do want to go broke in this hand.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah.
But like this, yeah, costs you some money, probably.
Yeah, I should, I should just call here. And then check, check the river again.
Yeah, that, that too, that too. Of course, uh, what are you gonna do if another diamond hits the river?
Be happy to do, yeah, call a jam. I don't think you fold.
Because he could, because he could have like a queen, jack of diamonds, we don't block diamonds, you know? Or spades, but anyway, interesting, very interesting hand.
So if a diamond, if a diamond comes on the river, we should shove?
We should still shove, yeah.
Okay.
If we bet, and now the, like, let's assume we bet like seven blinds and he calls, and the river is like, I don't know, six in diamonds, we still shove.
But we need shove, we don't, we don't check first, we don't, we just shove.
We should, we just shove, yeah.
Okay.
If we need to turn with seven blinds and not check raise the turn.
Okay, yeah.
But even in that line, we check, we just shove. Just to get calls from ace eight, and we don't check and then fold, right?
Yeah, no, no, never, I don't think so.
And he doesn't really have bluffs to turn into a bluff, you know? It's more likely that he has like ace 10, that he just calls. But he can check that back, when, when we check on the diamond, he just checks ace 10, and we lose money.
All right, that's...
Alright.
Yeah. Let's go. Uh, yeah, 9 dews off, in play. Then 9 suited, I call, I jack. Is it a call or is it a three bet?
We are in the cutoff, right?
Uh, yeah, we're on the, we're in the cutoff, yeah, it's, uh... Um, under gun plus two, because it's eight-handed, yeah, so...
We mainly call, we basically have always call, okay.
Yeah, so always a call. So we call, yeah, miss the flop, check, check. Bet, I fold. Anything special?
Interesting that he checks and then raises. What he had?
We can, we can watch, I don't know if we had the hand, if we have the hand in the end. Check, raise, is there a call? Check, check.
He raises.
5, 3. So he, he has the straight? He has a straight and doesn't bet, value bet the river?
I mean, makes sense. Like, he got raised on the turn, right? Like, doom representing a flush, right, and not, not a queen. I mean, he misplayed his hand.
Yeah, he should have bet the flop. Three hand.
Yeah, just to deny equity from kings and aces.
Yeah, I need.
Queen eight?
The queen eight, yeah.
I like his queen eight open, bro.
Yeah, his open is good, but his check raise on the turn is not the best.
Yeah, he should have bet the flop and then, bet the turn as well, I think.
Yeah.
And then check behind on the river. So 8, 6, yeah, I mean, I get a good price to see a flop, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you call anything here, any two, except like 7 dews off or, but do you otherwise call any two here?
We mainly call like this bottom, things like 8, 7, 6, 5, we rather call this, because we are less dominated from the other players. Like, if, if the flop is, for example, and we have like jack 8, and the flop is jack 5, 3, you know? We just lose a lot of money, versus they, they are good ranged, because they have all the good jack x, and aces, and kings, and sets. We don't really have that. We rather call 8, 6 than jack 7, for example.
Or king 9, or even king 6, king 5.
Yeah.
So you fold like, hands like, like Ben says, king 6 off, king 4 off, hands like that, you fold or you just call as well?
We can fold, we can fold, depends on the field, I guess.
Okay.
It's really like, not four ways, but like, the under the gun opens, and button calls, and we have like jack 8 or jack 9 offsuit. We always fold that in a big blind, always. Even though we get a good price, like, the range from under the gun and the flitting range from the button just crashes my range.
That's a reverse and plaid odds with those hands. Exactly.
Lose so much money if you hit the top pair.
Because these guys' ranges are so much, you know, dominating our, jack 8, king 6, queen...
Okay, 8, 6 is off.
7 type of, 8, 6, 4, 6, 3, 5, these hands, you know, will do the trick.
Uh, sizing. Um, ace 6 off, I don't even know if it's a raise or just a limp.
Be a limp, I think, 60 bigs, I think it's a limp, let me check. Ace 6, uh, you can, you can raise fold, or you can, or you can limp call. It's, uh, according to razor edge. So 50% of the times you raise it. Uh, 50% of the times, you just, uh...
Not the size.
But that's, that's 60 big blinds, 40, I, I, there's no 50, there, so 40 big blinds is always a raise fold. Uh, but the sizing, uh, should be going for 3x, always. Because you're playing out of position, if you get called.
Yeah, 3x or 3.5x.
Or 3.5.
Both are fine.
Okay.
2.6 is a bit... But two point six is a bit small.
Uh... On the big blind defend on the hand last, um, Ben asks if we call king six suited multi-way?
Yeah.
I think so.
Hands we always call, right?
Yeah.
Suited hands we always, okay. Even the jack nine suited and the jack eight suited, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just because you can make flashes.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah.
Fold, that's good.
Yeah. So, yeah, uh, limp, limp, and then, uh, forty-two big blind jam, eight jack off, I think it's called. Do you call or fold here?
I always fold.
Hold it, okay. And like, eight jacks suited, do you call?
Like, last five hands in a row, then I might flick in the call.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. If he's tired of waiting for hands.
Yeah.
Some, sometimes we see it happen, but...
I would even fold ace queen in that spot.
You would fold ace queen?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Just because I think my edge with, like, fifty big blinds is a lot bigger than, like, this coin flip.
See, even sixty big blinds, but that's, that's a very interesting thing, uh... What you just, what you just said, Zombie, I mean...
You see this a lot on party poker, you see this, like... Every ten hands, you see something like this happening.
Yeah, that's good. I make a lot of money.
Yeah, it's unbelievable, on party poker, they shove, like, hundred big blinds, I don't know what their range is, I have no clue. They just open shove a hundred big blinds, what do you do? I mean, you call aces, kings, maybe aces, queens? And ace king?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aces, kings, ace queens, that don't know how to play post-flop, you know? And they just rip it in.
Uh, I like, I like, my friend on the stream is asking, I mean, saying, uh, calling range there is, uh, like, maybe nines plus and a king? What do you, what do you guys think about the calling? What would your calling range be?
Yeah, ace king, nines, maybe some ace queens. But mainly ace queen is a fold. Maybe, like, call it ten percent.
Ace queen suited? How about ace queen suited?
Yeah, ace queen is still, like, ten percent call, rest fold.
Will you call with nines?
Ben's, Ben's saying jacks plus, probably.
I mean, if I can still re-buy, I go with tens, nines.
Yeah, it's not, it's, uh, it, this tournament has no re-entries.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, then I go with the tie.
It's a fold, it's a fold.
Yeah, yeah, let's do call tens.
You do take into account, when it's a re-entry tournament, that you go looser, um, early in the tournament?
Yeah. You're asking Zombie about, but he's like, "I'm always calling and then rebuying." Yeah? And it's, and it's, uh... And it's not just because of Hida, I mean, because of, like, it's his choice. Uh, but... Uh, like, if you know, if, if, if you think you are, you're, you know, your, your range is probably ahead of this guy's range, and you have, you know, chances, a lot of chances of doubling up at this point, I think, yeah, why not? And if you re-buy, you're on the same spot, like, fifty big blinds instead of fifty-seven, then you always take this chance, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But it also depends on your stack at that point, like, if you re-buy and you have twenty-five big blinds, would you still call and re-buy?
Depends on the tournament, but... We did already, right, so, gets to re-buy.
I think, I think we're losing you, maybe, maybe you are, maybe you need to, uh... Uh, to get the mic a little bit closer to your mouth?
Me?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, let's move on. Zombie, quiet on mic, yeah, yeah, I think, uh, maybe, maybe it's...
Maybe I have to talk lau- louder?
I think you're fine now.
Okay. I think so.
Uh, yeah, okay, let's go on. So, ace deuce suited, I fold. Um, I don't know if it is a fold? Or not? Um, where are we? In...
Yeah, I can still open.
I think it's an open too, I mean, I'm pretty sure raise your edge has, has an openness, like, middle position.
We could open.
And, and you also called two, uh, two three bet versus, uh, bad turns, uh, bad turn and small blind.
Yep. Okay. Queens. So I squeeze to ten? And get two folds? That's fine, yeah, okay.
We could, a bit goes, bit smaller, because, like, the opener is so short. But I like the size.
Yeah, I like the size.
The reason why you would go slower is because you want to call, or you...
I want to call from the opener.
You want to call from the opener?
If I go, like, fifty now, he thinks that he never, if he shoves, I never fold, right? If I go, like, fifteen big blinds, so I want to give him the illusion that if he shoves, that we still fold sometimes. You know?
Okay, so if you, if you go, like, nine, nine and a half, or nine X?
Yeah, and he might still think he has fold equity versus me, you know? Because we just squeeze, because the small blind is so kept and it's, like, calling, so we, like, let's attack that small blind thing and fold to the opener.
Okay.
Sometimes we have a squeeze bluff there.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. King seven off. Yep. I mean, that's the second time he just falls to a ace in the big blinds.
Interesting that he goes three X now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, fold.
Sometimes it's, uh, yeah. If I'm playing too many tables, then it's just easy to press the two point six button. And I do it some, automat- sometimes automatically too fast. So I see the hand, I just click, and then I think, yeah, I said small blind, I should go bigger, uh, afterwards.
Yeah.
Second time, uh, Doom squeezed all in there?
Yeah, so, there's a limp, a raise, and then again a shove. Ace queen off, I don't think has a call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If he would open shove, then you can maybe call, because then your heads up, but you never, like, aggro goes to four point six two.
Yeah, that's pretty strong.
Pretty raise, pretty big, under the gun with, with an under the gun limper in the pot, so I think that's pretty strong. Um, so I think just ace queen off as, as a fold. I thought about it, uh, in-game. Um, I remember the spot, so I thought about to call, but I said, yeah, I mean, still fifty-two big blinds deep. I don't think this is a call.
That's a good fold. Most, most people can, uh, lose a lot of money for not being able to fold in spots like this.
So do you call, like, ace king off here?
Yeah.
Ace king off you do.
Ace king, you basically never fold. I would still fold ace queen, I guess.
Okay. So, yeah, they all fold. So we don't know what he does. Yeah, I find it interesting as well, because he's, he only has twenty-six, twenty-seven behind.
Hmm.
So, I mean, I can go back to the hand. He opens, he has twenty-seven. He has twenty-seven behind, and the guy shoves to fifty-six.
Well, he, he, he could be, you know, uh, you know, raising there with ace jack suited. Or, or, I don't know, pair of sevens, or, I don't know, trying to iso raise? Or maybe king, king queen suited, in jack? He has a lot of raise faults.
Yeah, this size is just...
It's too big, yeah, it's, it's too big.
Yeah, he should, like, go three and a half fold?
Three and a half, I, I, I know. Especially, he's on, he's like thirty big blinds, three and a half is okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Jack eight off.
I mean, playing, playing in all this, playing in, in these tournaments that I do, uh, and playing under twenty-five big blinds, especially the system goes, I used to play in Stars, I, I discovered that you can't, you have raise faults even when you're fourteen big blinds.
Yeah, under gun, for example.
Yeah.
One of the biggest leaks in poker right now. People shoving too many big blinds from under gun.
Yeah.
So, what do you open then under the gun, fifteen big blinds?
Everything, basically, everything I wanna open from under gun.
Even jack nine suited?
No, but I don't wanna open this from under gun anyways, right?
Well, twenty big, twenty big blinds you do open.
Yeah.
Like, ten, nine suited, jack nine suited, queens?
I mean, a lot of players, I see a lot of players that just shove pocket nines, for example, for, like, eighteen big blinds under the gun. You know, and that's really not good. Just because they are so kept. Yeah, and they never fold, like, tens or jacks, right? If he shoves, he never folds tens, so we always get it in versus that anyways. But we don't give them the chance to, like, punt it off, to, like, bluff us with, like, pocket sevens, pocket sixes, pocket eights, ace five, you know, to just bluff us. We don't give them the opportunity to, because we shuffed.
And also, when you are...
It's not eighteen bigs. You will just open.
Yeah, that's also true, we only, only have, like, these ace queens in, like, pocket eights, pocket nines.
Yeah, so they can put you on a very close, a very tight, they can know what your hand almost is.
Exactly.
So you have a very, very good idea of your range if you open shove eighteen big nines.
We open everything until twelve, basically, under gun. So even from thirteen big blinds, we still open. Just because the chance that someone wakes up with a good hand is so high.
So...
There's still eight people left to act, you know? You have no information on eight, uh, eight people.
So you only start open shoving below, uh, ten and below?
No, twelve, twelve and below.
Okay, twelve and below. Alright.
When you feel comfortable post-flop, it's much easier. And it's also very difficult to feel comfortable post-flop, because, like, a lot of people now are mastering pre-flop, but still struggle post-flop, I see that every day.
You would always call suited hands.
And, and that also affects their pre-flop game, you know?
I don't mind a fold.
Yeah, and people underestimate the fold equity they still have with, uh, twelve, thirteen bigs, if they have to fold, exactly.
Jack eight suited, I just...
And call, yeah.
It's flop top two, which is pretty good, but folds.
We could also check.
I prefer to bet here. Out of position.
I think you just wanna... I think you just wanna start building, building a pot. If he has something, he's calling, if he has a five and eight, jack, he's calling, if he has hearts, he's calling. Um, maybe even...
Some gut shots, uh, states, everything.
I think there are a lot of hands that he wants to call here, if he has nothing, really nothing, and then he, even, even... I mean, he doesn't have a lot of overs, but if he has, like, so many hands, he can call here. So I think you just...
Yeah, but he's still gonna bet them, basically. If he has, like, six, seven, he's not gonna check it. If he check, he bets, right?
Mm-hmm.
The reason for, like, I don't hate to check with jack eight is just because, like, our range, if we check, is so weak, otherwise, like, if we have, like, four dussen clubs, we just check fold, right? But if you always do that, our check, checking range is so weak. I mean, just never have good hands in our range.
Exactly. And this is very important, what, 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 uh, Zombie just said. And I realized that after doing a couple of study sessions with, uh, with Zombie, and it, and it's making me a, a, a shit ton of money in the games I play. Uh, we shouldn't always check our weak hands, we should also check our, uh, uh, strong hands for that exact reason, to protect our checking range. So, otherwise, whenever we check, we're weak and we have to fold to any bet, right?
Yeah. Problem with jack eight is also, we block every pair, like, if the big blind doesn't have a pair, he's probably just on a gut shot, or like a straight draw that he will bluff, but not really call twice, right? So if he has, like, I don't know, six, four, he's, he might call bonds, but folds the turn, right?
Or he...
But he doesn't, he really have pairs, he has, like, the best pair he has is, like, a five. Other things we block.
Or he could decide...
We do have a deck and we have eight.
He could decide to start betting with, uh, with queen seven off, with the seven of hearts, you know, if we check. He could, uh, could...
Betting is also fine, of course, like, getting value is always good. But like, I wouldn't just, like, al- always bet this hand, for example.
Even if he, even if he has a crappy hand, like nine deuce off, right? And we check, he could, he could bet. It'd like, okay, I, I have, uh, runner, runner, you know, whatever, I'm gonna bet and try and take this, uh... Try and take it, and if you just flood, then, uh, he may just try and double-ball it, and then we just check call always.
Yeah. There's still room to bluff.
Okay.
And if he has, like, eight, five, we get a lot of money anyways.
Yep.
Because then he will bet and we call, and then he bets and we call, and on the river, we just, like, check raise all in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's correct. Mm-hmm.
I think, uh, on the turn, if you like the turn, um, sometimes it's good, uh, to check raise there, because you will, you won't like so many rivers.
Depends on the turn, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I just think that there are many hand, there are many cards that, uh, it's very dangerous, uh, any hearts, any nines, queens, uh, sevens. You, you don't like to see this cards, uh, there are so many.
Yeah, the problem with that is, though, we don't really have bluffs. Like, if you check call, and on the turn, we check raise all of the sudden, you know? What are we bluffing?
We don't have bluffs there, but we need some protection.
Yeah.
Most of the times. It's very dangerous flop, and, uh, the opponent gets there many times.
But if he gets there, we don't want to check raise him, right? Like, if he has, like, uh, six, four, and he decides to call, uh, to raise us, and then a seven comes, you know? Uh... And then we check raise him, he's gonna, he's gonna just shove on us, and we're gonna be on the spot, so we just check call. And if, uh, and then we check the river and call again, and if we lose, we lose. Unless the river is a juggle and eight, then we check shove.
I mean, yeah, this depends on, like, turn and river, right? If, like, the turn is a heart and the river is another heart, we probably don't check shove anymore.
Yeah.
We just check fold. But we don't have to be scared about that, you know? Sometimes we just lose with good hands, just happens. He also has a lot of worse hands that he can bluff, or like, you know? We get value from, like, eight, five, or like, jack five, or like, I don't know, queen, jack, king, jack, you know, we get value from that.
And this is, and this is very liberating what, uh, Zombie says, and, and this is exact, the exact thing he told me when I first spoke to him. You know, I, I folded a queen high flop with kings. And, and he goes to me, "Well, you just jump there, and if it's your time to go," if he has a set. Like, it was a three, four queen, uh, flop, and then I, I check, go call, and then I bet, I bet, I got raised, I called, and then I check, and he bets and I folded, and he goes to me, "If it's your time to go, then it's your time to go," you know? You shouldn't be afraid to play your hand, because, uh, and, uh, that's exactly the...
Whatever.
Yeah.
I think that's a mistake that a lot of, uh, lower-stake players make.
Exactly, like, like...
I also made, I also make this mistake, just by being afraid to go out, I mean, yeah. If it, if it happens, it happens, yeah, I mean, go out with a good hand, it's a good hand, I mean...
As long as you play your hand, you know, the way you're supposed to, then, you know, if it's your time to go, then, you know, it's... There's always the next tournament.
And go.
I just wanted to stress out how important this is, uh, because I want people to feel exactly that, you know, I want them to take that to their game, and not, don't be afraid, you know, to to, to bet and then fold.
Really, interesting. Like, this is just the case, like, yeah, it's just the truth. In case we get raised, like, we don't value bet, because we're in a stupid spot if he raises, but like, we just still bet to get value. Doesn't matter, if he raises, his range is just super, super strong, and we just fold, it doesn't matter. You know?
Yeah.
Indeed.
Alright, moving on.
Yeah, deuce five, fold. Eight, nine, folds. 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 Nine, okay, six. Another gun, yeah. I mean, ace five and the big blinds. So we fold. That's again the guy Doomies, uh, I think he's pretty aggressive. Uh, what we see so far, but I think ace five obviously have to fold, right?
We don't have a lot of hands in this guy. Even seventy-one hands are not a lot, but, uh, even from those seventy-one hands, he has like seventeen percent three bet.
It's twenty-six percent three bet. Seventeen is race, is race first in.
Oh, oh, there, there, it's twenty-six, even worse, even worse.
My, my head is VP and then, uh, PFR, um, uh, race first in, three bets, um, then the last one is...
Fall to, fall, fall to a C bet.
No, the last one, behind the twenty-six, there's fold, uh, it's a fold to three bets, and then I have, uh, C bets, uh, and then FCBS, fold to C bets.
So his C bets thirteen percent?
Yeah, and he three bets twenty-six.
What does that, what does that tell us? I mean, seventy-one hands is not enough.
Yeah, but it's seven out of...
Yeah, it's not enough.
But, but...
And C bet is like, yeah, one out of eight is, is...
It's ridiculous, like, because he, that means he gets, uh, he gets in, uh, in, he raises in with a lot of crappy hands. Like, if you don't see bet a lot, you don't like what you see, right, a lot? But anyway, it's not a lot of hands, so let's not just go into speculations.
At ours, that's like, you have one hundred forty thousand hands, right?
Yes.
What I see is like a very low C bet, like fifty-six percent is not a lot. What, C bet more? A lot more. Just because like, if he C bet twenty-five percent, he has to call so much, and in these micro stakes, people just overfold a lot. We just can barrel turns and, you know?
Can spare us a little?
See three, three rivers.
Thank you, bro.
These hands are from, I think...
We have a study session today, so we hope you guys enjoy.
I do know that my C bets, um, was even lower before...
Yeah, you're right. I like your trick, you're right. It's enough, it's enough for us to know that he's like weird.
Now it's like around sixty-two.
Yeah, that's more reasonable, yeah.
And I see that indeed my C bet success is still the same percentage.
What about three bet?
Uh, my three bets as in this month, so since I bought Raise Your Edge, it's like nine.
Nine, okay, that's more reasonable, yeah. Three bet, six percent is also a bit, it's not enough.
If I look at my hands from this month, I have a VP of twenty-four, uh, and a race first in of twenty, I think nineteen was it, of twenty? And then three bet was nine point two. And C bet is sixty-two percent.
Like seventy-four percent, just because as, as explored, people don't check raise enough on flops. So you just can C bet a fuck ton, and they just fold, and you make a lot of money.
And you go, you go really small then, like twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five percent, mainly.
Okay. Yep, okay.
The thing about going so small, out of, out of my experience in these stakes, you get... You get raised a lot, especially in party poker, you get raised a lot with, with air, so...
I mean, I, if I look at my stats, um, and I look at my C bet percentage, and I look at my C bet success, it's still the same amount of success. Even if I bet, if I, even if I C bet ten percent more than I used to. So you just make more money.
So you're making money, yeah.
You just make more money to do exactly the same thing, just more.
But the sizing, the sizing as well, like, like now that you got, you know, now that you got Raise Your Edge, and now that, now that you're changing the game you're playing, you will find yourselves in the same spots you were before, but in diff- differently. Because you, because people will, will respond differently to your raises. Like, let's, like, we've seen the queen high hand, you have ace queen, you had ace queen, and you bet like seventy-five percent of the pot there, and people just, and both of them just folded. You won't be seeing that a lot. People will be flooding, they will be three betting you with air, because, oh, he's betting small, that means he has nothing, and that's why it's important to, uh...
Yeah, but if you like, it's especially in, in hands that you open like cutoff button and the big blind calls. If you C bet those a hundred percent, you get like a tremendous amount of folds. People overfold way too much.
You do, yeah, yeah.
I understand that if you open under the gun, I understand if you open under the gun and MP calls, um, that it's a different story. I mean, if you have ace queen and the flop comes, king, jack, ten, uh, king, jack, eight or seven or something, and you just have the, the, the gut shots, you can still C bet, but you're gonna get called way more, because the flop hits way, way more the range. Like, if you, if you, for example, open jack nine on, on the cutoff, and the big blind calls, and the flop comes eight, seven, four, I think you just always C bet. Even if you don't have the ace.
Do you C bet jack nine on ace nine three?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, we just don't, our hand doesn't matter, we just auto C bet twenty-five percent, twenty percent.
If I open from the cutoff, if I open from the cutoff button and the big blind calls, and it's an ace high flop, I always C bet. Any hand, any two cards I have.
But, but, but what if you open under the gun and, uh, middle position calls and the big blind calls as well? Or even just the middle position, do you, do you C bet ace, uh, jack, uh, four with the jack nine?
Uh, yeah, I do. Because you, he has a lot of, a lot of other hands as well that don't hit flop. And a lot, they, they just fold, they, they won't call you with the, with the gut shot. A lot of the time, they just fold it.
I think they call the gut shot, but like, they still have like fives and sixes and sevens, you know, they just fold. But like, I think this is a spot where we just check a lot, even though, like, we, if you have like ace ten, we still check with ace ten. Just because middle position has some, some good hands, and we wanna protect that range, because we also have some weak pairs, you know? But yeah, that's very specific spots.
Yep, okay.
But in position, ace high boards, just auto C bet.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah. Queen nine off, as a fold, I think. Yep.
I think you can, uh, C bet very exploitatively at lower stakes, opponents not, uh, paying enough attention to bet sizing. That's true, that's true, and you can take advantage of that, to go for one do with, you know, with big hands, you just bet big, and they just call.
So I could, he has fifteen big blinds behind, so three betting, um, makes him always all-in.
Yeah, we want that.
Of course...
He always limps, his, he limped like, I don't know, seventy percent earlier, right? And now all of the sudden, he raises four point five X, just raise and get it in.
Just get it in, okay. So yeah.
Like, now he just folds queens.
Yeah, yeah, while pre-flop, we, we get it in, yeah. Yeah, he calls anyway, he has...
He should just call here, though.
Oh!
Yeah, I should not, I should not raise here, I should just call the five and let them stack off on the river.
Yeah. That's right. If you raise, we'd never bluff, and his range will get a lot stronger.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, I'm... Yeah, okay. So yeah, it's tens, I mean, we will, we won't, it's going in anyway, so...
Yeah, but like, let's say the flop is like queen five three, minus...
It should go in on the, it should go in on the, um, pre-flop, we should just get it in pre-flop. Because if he doesn't hit the ten on this board, like, for example, it's ace, ace, ace queen nine, I don't think I, I stack him.
I, I think, I think, uh... You also, you were also targeting the players after you ju- with just calling, like, uh... Of course, it's gonna be very tough for them to squeeze, but there is thirty-five and twenty-seven big blinds, you know, so maybe, I think, I think you didn't wanna ISO him. I thought, I think you wanted, you were cool to playing this hand multways as well, right? Like, uh...
Yeah, but it's, it's like Zombie says, he limps, he limped so many, so many hands already, and now he just opens like four point six five, he has a good hand.
Yeah, and if he's like ace king, flop is like five, six, seven, he's just gonna fold.
Don't we, don't we want though, to give the opportunity to, uh, follow three players to squeeze with a hand like king, jack, uh, king, queen, and, and things like that?
Yeah, but they don't really think that this opener is folding, right?
Hmm, true.
So if they squeeze, they always have a good hand.
They will have a good hand.
Okay.
True.
So we should just get it in pre-flop here.
You guys go on, I'll, I'll, I'll take it, uh, I'll be right back, gonna go to the restroom for a minute, but keep going.
So you, so you just three bet here to sizing then?
Explorative and like three bet to eight big blinds.
Yeah, because you want, maybe, you never know that, that small blind and mid-blind wants to continue.
Yeah, and also I can, like, if I go to eight, and the button is, or like, the big blind is shoving, I can still fold. Like, now I can have like ace, jack, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And if I go to like eight, and the big blind is shoving, and the other guy is calling, I can fold.
Okay.
So yeah, just go to like eight or nine big blinds.
Yeah, it's not, not, you don't have to three exit here, because he opens so big.
Yeah.
He's getting it in anyway, if, if he does something, it's just getting it in.
And we want the chance to get it in pre-flop, like, if he, if he go to twelve big blinds and the big blind is just calling, you know? And the other guy's also just calling, we card, even though we've aced it, it doesn't really matter, but like, if you have ace king, for example.
Yeah, okay. Ace eight off, I open, ten, ten, five, C bets, he calls, I hate the eight, I check. And then another ten comes, he bets one big blind, I just call. He has a five. Um... This hap- this happens a lot on these stakes, the one big blind bet. I mean... How do you, what do you do, when, what do you do with it? Should I raise this?
Yeah. Because he never has like nines, he might have nines, but like, he raises pocket jacks and pocket queens, kings, pre-flop. He never has a ten, so he mainly has like sevens, sixes, fives, maybe duses, threes, even like an ace high type event. And just give him the opportunity to like block, in his opinion, or in his mind, and if he raises, he's like, this is full of bullshit, because we would have bet every strong hand on turn. So I'm gonna call my king five here, you know? If he go to eight or nine big blinds, he's never folding his king five.
Okay, it's even that big, so I was thinking like five or six, but you would even go to eight, nine?
Eight, seven, eight.
Yeah, okay.
Like, this is basically a check with the one big blind. It's joke bet, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I see the, I see that a lot, and now, it's always like a weak, a weaker hands type, um... So yeah, okay, so I should always raise this for value.
Good to know. Yeah. The price is too good to fold any hand, basically. Like, he might have like queen, jack and hearts, you know? So we never fold, ace high.
Okay. King six, under the gun, I think it's a fold, right, so...
Fifty percent king eight, I would say, king nine always.
Yeah, king nine always, king eights, yeah, it's eight, and it's all, king...
King nine suited, always?
Yeah.
Yes, what change?
King nine is a strong hand. Can make straights, flashes, top pairs. Maybe just fold this one.
Yep.
This is the four X, it's just too big.
Yeah, I don't know what these people, I, I, like, I would never open four X. Just...
I mean, yeah. You never know.
But it, with, what is their range there? I mean, do they do this with really strong hands, or is it just like sixes, sevens? I don't understand this. This is something, if they do this, if they do this, I, I can never put them on a range, I have no clue. Or it's super strong, or it's just like, I don't know.
I think it's like jack nine off. Just like, top range, basically.
I, I think sometimes they have pocket fives or the small pocket pair that they are, in my experience. But I totally agree, sometimes I can't, uh, find out what they...
That's all, what you know?
So I, against the four X open, what should we call, what should we call in the big blind, what should we defend?
Single hand, I would say. And like, strong hands, like king, queen, which just still don't fold king, queen, king, jack, you know? Even jack ten suited it, just a call.
Bottom range? Ten nine, what do you think?
Jack ten.
Jack ten, yeah.
Offset, man, I mean... Suited hands, we call wider, because, you know, we can make flushes versus his overpairs, and then we stack him. Which is like a lot in this four X big blind range, you know?
Yeah.
But, uh, ten nine suited plays really good post-flop.
Yeah, we'd call that suited. But I mean, ten nine offsuit, for example, before.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Ace, king and a small blind. I think we raise, yeah, it's probably too big.
Big M.
I think so. Yeah, so you go here nine, eight, nine?
Ten.
Just ten, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Four X, plus, plus one, so four X, the opener, and then plus the caller, one, so, ten.
But you do, you don't make it bigger, because you're out of position, out of position.
You are, because you're...
I, I mean...
You are making it, because, because you're making it four X. Meanwhile, if you're in position, it's a three X.
Yeah.
Already big enough.
Okay, so, too big. Waste of a hand.
Eight big blind, that's not bad.
Yeah, yeah.
You took some blinds.
Yes, yes, Alex, exactly.
That's one hundred percent, that's always good.
Poker University.
Yeah, that's, yeah, 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 it's correct.
I like the fold. Against, uh, solid stack, you don't have equity.
Yeah, I think duses is just, we are definitely not deep enough to call duses here. He only has forty big blinds.
Fifteen blinds, uh, is a shitty stack, to find a, a set there and take his stack, never.
And it's, and it's still always a weak, a weak set, you never know, I mean, said, over set your, your stack anyway, but I don't think duses is a call here.
Uh...
Yeah, it's a fold.
Uh, but it's, which, which brings me to what we said earlier about raise folding these, these stacks. See how we perceive their, their stack? Like, uh...
Their range, yeah.
Their range, yeah, like, uh, we fold a lot of good hands, uh, as well, because of that reason, right? So... Just wanted to point that out.
What about, uh, pocket eights there?
I get it in.
Do, do you, do you re-raise for your eights, or do you just flood?
I just three bet. I get it in.
So you just three bet to six and get it in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
We still has a raise fours, like, king nine, king ten, you know? Some ace X.
Like, there are shoving stacks behind, like twenty-two bigs, sixteen, like seventeen, other guy has six, so we don't mind.
Yeah, we still always call off then, doesn't matter.
You call, you call the twenty-two big blind stack as well off, yes?
I mean, then, then it gets closer, I don't mind the fold then, but if you go like six point five, seven, we just have to call.
Yeah.
I think if you make a three bet there, uh, with pocket eights, you will call twenty-two big blinds. If you decide to three bet, you are ready to call twenty-two big, big blinds.
What do you think, what do you guys think about, you know, uh, four point eight, or five big blind, uh, three bet here, instead of going to six, like? What do you guys think about that? Four point seven, four, four point eight?
I understand he shouldn't fold. And eights is not like slam dunk, if he has like jack ten suited, for example, and we have pocket eights, the flop is like, I don't know, a ten, you know? We don't know where we are, basically. I mean, I just go big to like deny him this, all this equity that he has with his overcards. You know, if he has king nine, he's performing fifty, fifty versus my eights. But if I raise, six big blinds, he has zero percent, because he always folds.
So you, you would raise to six here, so six or seven?
Yeah, six.
Almost the same. Six. Six. I just.
Yeah, it doesn't matter for him to call six or seven, I mean, if he has a hand, he gets it in, if he doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost the same for him. Even for the stack above, uh, about the stack who has, uh, twenty-two big blinds. Uh, doesn't matter if you raise six or five or seven.
Yep, okay.
But I think sometimes if you raise, uh, five bigs there, maybe you have a fold against twenty-two big blinds, sometimes. I don't know.
Then you can fold, yes.
You, you tip one big blind, uh, for yourself, sometimes. I don't know.
Okay, tens, under the gun. Just open. We bet, um, pretty big. A little bit over half pot. And we get two folds.
With aces.
Excuse me?
What would you do with aces, if you have aces?
Um. Think aces, aces and kings, I check?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Just because we have a lot of like check folds, like check tens, you know? King tens, king nines, that have nothing.
With tens, there are so many turns, you don't wanna see every overcard, it's just not, not, you're not happy.
Then we can bet.
Um, but with aces and kings, I mean, yeah, the, the overcards are just way less, I mean, with aces that are non, and with kings, it's just four aces that can come, that you are afraid of, are afraid, I mean. It's five, two, seven, five rainbow, I mean, yeah, I don't know, the big blind can have two pair, but if he has two pair, he has two pair, I mean.
Yeah, but a lot of players c-bet aces, and then their checking range again is very, very weak. Like they have maybe pocket seven in the, in their range. But the rest, all the overpairs are c-betting, you know? And they check like jack ten, queen tens. So I, I can, as in-position player, just bet very small, attack my range, the under the gun range, and he just folds, always. Because he never checks strong hand. But yeah, with tens, we just bet.
Yeah, so like ten jacks, queens, you always bet here, right? Like any eights, nines, everything you have. Uh, and do you like king, queen stuff, ace, king, you just also c-bet, right? Yes, you do, yeah? On a board like this?
It's not bad. Depends on the player again.
They, he's very strong, most of the times. We can bet almost every time if we, if we want. What do you think?
Yeah. I think so. Like, especially like these ace X, low ace X suited tens, can bet. That don't block like jack tens, king tens, that, uh, flat caller has, that he just folds. You know, that has a decent amount of equity versus my range.
Okay.
But yeah, I think like jack ten is still a give up. Jack ten, queen ten. Like we block too many hands that he can have, that he would fold, this is our bet. And he's not folding like ace five, ace four, ace, ace three, right? And if you have jack ten, we don't block that. But we block with jack ten, king tens, jack tens, ten nines, that would fold on the flop.
So hands like king ten, jack ten, stuff of hands, you just check as well?
Yeah.
But any ace, ace X hands, uh, you will c-bet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
I like the, the big bet also there.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they have, if they have something, they just call anyway, so. Uh, you want, you want, you don't want a lot of floats here, you don't want king, queen to float. Um, I think.
Yeah, it's, against for guys, I, I like to bet big there, because they, we need some protection.
I think king, queen suited is always gonna float if they have some connection there, like, uh, like, uh, king, queen of hearts, or trades or clubs, they could. Maybe not always.
I mean, people call that enough.
I think it's been over, you should call, but I think it's a lot, a lot of people just fold it. Of king, jack, or queen ten, or, like queen ten of hearts, I mean, a lot of people just never, never call this.
A big bet is minus EV, if you call, uh, with queen, jack, uh, with hearts, or something.
Okay.
Against, uh, sixty percent of the pot.
It's like Zombie said, it depends on the player, like, a lot of players will, a lot of players will, especially that deep, like, uh, exotic, exotic guy, will, you know, probably float uh, wider, which is good for us. Sometimes we pay for it, but.
Betting bigger there, you take, uh, some value if you want to, if he wants to float.
It's true that, it's true that,
You pay your value.
It's true that if they float, uh, life sucks, because what do they float with? Like if he just calls. He also calls, you know, he floats with, uh, king, queen, king, jack, ace, ten, I mean, ace, jack, suited, or things like that. But he also, uh, floats with his sets, right?
Uh, pocket eights.
Pocket sevens, pocket sevens, pocket fives, pocket deuces. Pu- maybe pocket eights, what if we see an eight on, or, or a six? You know, it's, like, we have, we will hate a lot of cards if they float here.
Yeah, that's why you go, you, you just wanna go big, because there are not a lot of turns you will like.
Most of the times, yes.
Yeah, you will like a ten, but even a nine and eights, uh, a four, if the big blind calls, I mean, there's so many bad cards for you here.
He's also, yeah, he's also floating his ace four suited ace. Three suited.
Yeah, I think an ace is really bad for us. Other card are fine.
Okay.
It's just better to bet there, uh, against two guys, uh, rather than, uh, just check. And see the turn.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, uh, ten, seven is probably a call.
Yeah.
Especially for the small raiser, two seventeen.
Yep. I think we should go almost hundred percent here. Maybe the worst of should not, but all the rest.
I think we fold like seven, three, seven deuce off, uh, nine, three, nine deuce off, this type of hands.
Even ten, six off should, sometimes it's a call.
Ten six for sure, yeah.
Can make a straight. Not the mass, but you can.
Like, it's like nine, three, eight, four, seven, three, seven deuce, eight deuce, nine deuce of those things you just fold, right? And then all the rest, you just have to call.
All the pretty shitty hands.
Like, like one of the things we, we sometimes forget to do, especially when we multi-table as well, we forget to look at the sizing of the player that is, you know, is raising. Position is very important as well, but also the sizing, you know? So, doesn't mean a lot, always, I mean, sometimes it does and sometimes it does not, it doesn't mean that we have to take it for granted that he has a, a monster hand, or a bad hand, or whatever. But.
It depends on the, it depends on the player, I think.
Yeah, but, but.
Like, we, we're fun players, then you can make something out of sizing, but I mean, if you're, if you're a decent player, you just almost open the same, you just open always the same sizing from the same stack depth, whatever hand you have.
Yes, but it, but it does, uh, have something to do with our decision whether to call or not. Like if it was the same exact spot with a four point five X, it's obviously always a fault.
Yeah.
We all always fold ten, seven to a four point five X, even, even three point five there, I think.
Even three X.
Even three X. But two point seventeen, two point five, two point six, hmm. Yeah, we're doing.
But yeah, I mean, you just need to call here, you only need twenty percent equity.
Exactly. So.
So, I mean, I think you always, you almost always have it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, king deuce off in small blind, so folds. Three, four is a fold.
Mid-raises of like nine blinds. Good to know.
This hand or the hand before?
Uh, William, William, yeah, he opened nine, yeah, I saw that too. But like a nine.
It's always good to like make notes of this, like, to, you know? If I see like this, I always give him the recreational deck. Like this is not good, you know, it's just not balanced.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always note ten stars, so.
You can, yeah, you can click there.
Yeah. No, I mean, don't have to do it here, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's okay, it's okay. I, I will see it, uh, no matter what, but I normally, I always note players and, um, yeah, and poker stars itself.
Same close of limping, like, most limping players are like fun players, you know?
Yeah, unless they have like fourteen, fifteen big blinds, then they could limp some type of, some type of hands. And late position up.
Not a big fan. But like in some ICM spots, limping is very good, but like, or in the small blind, for example, we limp in the small blind a ton.
Yeah, yeah.
In general, it's bad.
Yeah, mostly, most limpers are just fun players or recreational players.
I was trying to punt, uh, my last tournament yesterday, and I had ace, king under the gun in Party Boy, and I was like, I, I think I said it on stream, I'm gonna limp like fun players too, and I limped, uh, card of limbs, uh, bottom limbs, and the big blind just shows fifty big blinds. I called him, he had like six four, six three off. And I made quads with the kings. I'm like, yeah, you know? Fun player power!
Jackpot, ten bucks to matrix.
I think it's my only limp, like, uh, for the last, I don't know, past, uh, three, four months. It's working out for me, like one hundred percent of the times.
Yeah, should limp after that, eh?
Like, here he does it again, opening under the gun now. For nine bigs. Let's see if we go, yeah, it's bad fold. Ace six off from middle position. Um, yeah, I think, I, I, I think I fold his hands.
Yep, it's. Because look at the shopping, there are lots of shoving stacks as well.
Yep.
We wanna be a little bit tighter as well. Oh, yeah, Jesus! Jesus with the three months of support, thank you, Jesus, two month streak. Here once up, thank you so much, Ambro.
You're welcome, matrix.
This is, this is, uh, this can be recorded as the first time I thank someone uh, on stream and get an instant reply in voice. Thank you, man, thank you, Ray, Jesus.
I'm really lucky.
Maybe I am lucky. Thank you so much, Ambro. Aristobaraboli, de chriazet, de chriazor.
I'm going. Let's go to the hand, sorry, guys.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine, you don't have to say sorry, yeah? So ace three, uh, defend on the big blinds.
We could shove. Just because we saw him opening a lot of like nine bigs, otherwise, if I see this the first time, I was, I would be like, this is aces or king, you know? But like we saw him do, do that, so he's probably not aware of like chip stacks, blind levels, stuff like that. So he's just like opening like ten, nine like this, you know? Because he doesn't wanna shove it. So we shove, he probably folds a decent amount. And if not, we, we would have, we can call a shove from nine bigs in the cutoff, if ace three.
Yeah.
If he shoved, we, still, he can still fold, right? We get five blinds or four blinds.
I think shove, it's better.
Yeah, I, 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 I like that logic.
And we have the stack.
This, this may, this may, this is like a wake-up call for everyone of us, you know, to just pay attention on the table. I.
Yeah, I, I didn't notice when I, when I was playing that he did that, like for.
And it's totally fine, I, I miss it, I miss like millions of, uh, tells like these ones. Because, you, you know, we have, uh, we have, uh, have other tables as well, probably focusing on, uh, an important hand at the same time. You know, we have, uh, a lot of distractions, we have families around, kids around, you know, you know? But I'm just saying how important it is, pay attention, you know, to tendencies.
So yeah, I fold to a c-bet. I don't know if I should call here or not, I have no clue.
No, his c-bet size is also very bad. Too big.
Ace is too big for, yeah.
Yeah.
He's just trying to shove the river, I mean, the turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, he can do that with a quarter, but he can do that with a quarter as well.
If, if you call, if you call the flop, uh, you don't have a fold equity, it's very bad.
Yeah, we should, we either shove or fold, right?
Yeah.
Don't think we have too many calls.
Like if he had, uh, same stack as we had, right? Would you call that, uh, a c-bet?
I think I would.
Backdoor straight rolls, backdoor flash draws, our range is pretty much.
Yeah, I still have ace high, I think you, I think you call once at least. Let's see what the turn is, if the turn is a diamond or a four or a five, I think you can call again.
Yeah.
Too small, but sorry.
I agree.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, let's go on.
Oh, look at that, sixes.
Um. Yeah.
What do you do with the sixes there with the seventeen bigs? When, uh, a guy limps from under the gun? You, John?
Yeah. It's so much. Sixes performed so poorly.
Like, let's see, let's see the showdown, I, I, I just wanna, I, I didn't catch what, uh, what, uh, this guy exotic limped with. He had.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
Probably ten.
Jack eight suited.
Look at that.
Yeah, he would have folded it. And we would have won three point five big blinds, which is of like seventeen big blinds, a lot of big blinds.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven, seventeen, eighteen is, is too much to shove with sixes, I think.
Oh, I think it's just shove.
You don't open shove, you, you're opening versus a limb. It's not like you open shove, like if it's, if the hands were reversed, he wouldn't open shove them, uh, he would raise fold, probably. To shove.
Yeah, but like, his limping range is not balanced. So he's not like limping aces a lot. Like, maybe he's limping aces sometimes, but mainly like these jack eights, like, I don't know, king seven, king six, king five. If he just shove, we just take it down. But now we see, see like ace, ten, eight flop and lose the hand. Yeah, if, if the jack eight is betting like one time, we just fold.
You shove all, all your pairs here, like deuces as well?
No, no, I think, I think I shove like fives.
Fives plus.
Yeah.
And do you also shove nines and tens, or do you raise it?
Tens I raise, nines I probably shove. Yeah.
Okay. So nine, nines is the threshold for shoving?
I think, I think, yeah, I think you ra- I think you raise queens plus, right?
You mean shove, we can raise. Like he's a recreational, he's gonna limp call a lot.
So like tens, jacks, you also just raise? I would just raise, I think.
Yeah. I think so too.
Okay.
I mean, you, you could just shove. It's the easier way, but.
Yeah.
I'll play in post-up, easy, easy game.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, this should be an open, queen, eight suited.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What is a fold? King nine off is a fold.
You make a really good point there, matrix, we all play another pilot way more than we think, it's true, isn't it? Root shake.
He does it again.
Like, whenever I go through study sessions with, you know, with experienced, uh, guys, like Zombie, Zombie's a crusher, I don't know if you know, he he's, he's a really good player.
If I do it with queens, I should do it with ace three and ace four.
I am always, always amazed by their, you know, by even how they just, they have a, a predator's eye of, you know, these things, we saw this guy doing a lot of this, we saw this guy doing a lot of that. And I think for me and everyone watching is, 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 is really important to stress this out of, of how important it is to keep our eyes open, you know, cause, cause at one point, at one point on the game, we will have to make one decision, that if we had this one information that we missed earlier, means, you know, means, uh, the world for, for our tournament, right?
Yeah, and the, yeah.
But this is assumed that people reach up wide enough, which is not the case. So we can limp even, or like raise.
Attention to detail, yeah, exactly, and tendencies.
I think, uh, against these people, uh, against the population here, what we seen, I think we should open wider, yeah? I think we get lots, way too many folds. Cause they don't, I, it's not like, yeah, I mean, Animus star looks a little, looks like he's okay, he has okay stats, but like the rest is just. Yeah, it's close, I think.
Here we just three bet, yeah, with three bet.
He's a regular, this guy, I just shark, shark scoped him, but he, he looks like a breaking even or a losing player. He's got like seven, uh, uh, riff guy. Opener, under the gun opener.
Okay, okay.
He's got like seventeen thousand, uh, games and his ability sixty one, which is an indication of, uh, breaking even-ish.
Yeah.
So here you just three bets to six.
Yeah.
Okay. So you get the call. Is king queen, is he's king queen off, is it? Is it the good or not?
You mean a good?
You're shoving range.
A good call? You mean?
Yeah, he calls with king queen off.
Well, uh, queen, king queen off, you know, you are flipping at best. He blocks ace king, ace queen, kings and aces, so he's, he's, you know, at best, he's flipping, uh. I, I don't know if it's good or not, you know, but maybe for less than twenty bigs, maybe I can understand it. Uh, on the other hand, uh, it depends, you know, when ICM is in play, it's always a fold, always a fold.
Yeah, it's just three bet, he puts this tournament life at risk as well.
Yeah, he does, he does.
I don't, I don't think he should call here, I would never call there.
Yep, three bet.
Because king queen off performs so bad against my range.
It's a dominating hand.
I mean, uh, we can put it to maybe have a look, uh. So what is my shoving range here, I? So aces, kings, I don't think I shove.
Yeah.
Um, queens I also don't shove, so what do I shove, something?
Uh, I don't think you shove, I don't think you shove ace nine, ace ten.
I think you raise.
Yeah.
I mean, you should basically raise with everything and don't shove.
But if I shove, what do I shove, I mean, I'm not gonna start.
Ace king and ace queen and pocket eights, nines, tens, jacks. I don't think you shove ace ten, for example.
Yeah, me neither. Not even ace, ace jack, not even ace jack, you're not shoving ace jack off.
Not king queen, not king jack, not ace jack, yeah, you just like shove pairs and ace king.
And queens, you're gonna be shoving probably, I mean, you wouldn't be shoving them, but let's say you would shove queens, you can put them there for your, you know.
Put them like fifty percent.
That's, that's your range, pretty much.
Yeah, maybe even ace king, I think you shove ace king.
Ace king off, ace king suited, ace king off, you're shoving. Ace king suited as well.
So like this?
No, no, ace king suited as well. Can you shove?
Something like this.
Yeah.
And then he has, uh, king queen off. So he only has thirty four.
Uh, you can, you can, uh, select his exact hand, uh, I don't know if it makes any difference. But, but still, look at how like he's, he's got, he's performing, like, we want him to call.
Yeah.
With our entire range.
Yeah, for me, it's, I, I mean, I want him to call, but he shouldn't call.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't.
He should, he should only call like nines plus, um, and like ace king. Maybe ace queen?
I think ace queen suited is a good hand to shove sixteen blind there.
Like, uh, question to, back to you guys. Is the fact that he has king queen off good for him that he blocks more combinations for us? Than if he had king queen suited?
And make him make, makes more flashes or what?
Like, like if he had king queen suited, let's say, uh, of, of king queen of clubs, right? He just blocks, uh, like, uh, two combinations, like, uh, ace, king, ace queen of clubs, but now he blocks more than two, right? He blocks, uh, the, the, the the ace, the king, the ace queen of clubs, ace king of, uh, spades. Does it, does he block more combinations if, if, if it's not suited? Yeah, I guess that's my question. What if, what if you just try and select the exact hand? Uh, is it, is it gonna give him, uh, better equity? Like, uh, like it's the, it's the next button, next to the range. There's another button, you can select his exact hand. Small one, there, there you go, like. We have thirty four eighty six percent, I, I, I'm sure it's a stupid question, but I just. Yeah, he has a, he has different equity.
Well.
Like, uh,
Does he?
Yeah, he, I I don't know, did he? I think by a little, by a very little. I don't know, I just.
Eighty seven on the Indian. So is it thirty four eighty seven?
I think it's the same, uh, thirty four eighty seven.
Well, yeah, just very little, very little, but it doesn't even matter, doesn't even, so it doesn't count, doesn't count as blocking more combinations.
Our hands are ranges, right? If our hands is like a exact hand, that makes sense. If our hands is like the exact jacks we have, then it makes sense.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay.
Is it the same to have, uh, king queen suited or ace king, ace queen offshod? King queen suited or ace queen offshod? What's the best?
Ace queen off. Cause if the ace were more live, those are kings and queens.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, but.
He has like three, three outs.
I mean, sometimes, uh, with, uh, king su, king queen suited, you block kings, queens, um, ace queen, ace king.
Yeah, but he has a call, right?
You have the same argument for ace queen off. I mean, you also block aces, queens.
Yeah, yeah, sure, but just that thing, yeah.
That's exactly, it's, it's like, you have the same amount of blockers against the good hand, so I don't think that makes a difference, you just have, you just, it's just better because you have the ace.
Yeah.
So you are, it's like, um, like Zombie says, you're, against queens, kings, you still have thirty percent.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
This guy, this guy, this, this guy is very trolley on lean.
What can I do here?
I think we shove.
What is he doing?
Yeah, me too, I think, because we, I think we crush this guy's range, I gonna be.
Be surprised to see aces, to be honest.
Yeah, he's gonna be, he's gonna be raising ace four, king ten, whatever, he's, he's just not only, he just makes it, you know?
And the fact that the cutoff isn't the full stack, so we don't lose our tournament dive is also nice.
Oh, okay.
So we just are afraid of three players instead of four. Yep, if he calls, it's whatever. We only lose ele- eleven blinds. Okay.
So we will see.
The two big blind dunk is also good.
Let's ace king.
Alright.
Ace king, great.
It was really, so, yeah, haha, result oriented, let's go.
But he could also have like, uh, king jack or queen.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Jack, queen, whatever, it just happened, sometimes they have it, you know, it's, it's doesn't mean that they always have it. And we're not talking about the specific, uh, hand, we're just talking about the spots, spots like that. But it, it turned out good for us here.
My, my mistake turned out good, because otherwise I would have been out.
It's a very weird spot, uh, do you want to shove?
I don't know if, I don't know if he would be out low, I don't know if the, if, if the ace jack guy would call.
Yeah, that's the question.
I think he always calls, yeah, he has one hundred bigs and plays fifty three percent.
Yep.
So you call there?
No, he's gonna call.
Do you want to, do you want to show this guy, but someone probably to have a better hand than your ace ten? Do you want to be a risk boy in this risk?
Which, which hand do you mean, like the, the other guys, the three guys that have more than us or the under the gun guy?
Um, under the gun makes three big blinds, we have ace ten, what should, uh, we do here?
I just saw what you said, um, root shake, I mean, it's true.
Someone might have.
We just, we just blame the variance, but.
Yeah, I think we shove, I think it's close to zero, so we don't really make a lot of money by reshoving here.
The fact that we just missed something important, that's very important, that's very important, we just said.
Right, I won't shove ace nine off, right, so ace ten is the bottom, I always shove ace queen, so ace ten is pretty marginal, we can shove, we can fold, it's both fine, I think I rather shove.
That's why it's, that's why it's so important, you know, to do these study sessions.
Uh, I mean, uh, it's not, uh, a big mistake if we fold here.
Especially with better players.
Yeah, it's not a big, yeah.
Or equally good.
Maybe even.
People that can contribute to each other's, uh.
Yeah, it's just close, it's just really close.
Yeah, you won't make a lot of chips in that spot.
It's very wild spot, yeah, I like this.
And if I shove suit the ace jack, I call with hundred big blinds, should he call, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, because he has, uh, one hundred big blinds?
Uh, you mean he should call or he will call?
Yeah, should he call?
Okay.
If I shove, should he call?
If you don't, if you think about folding ace ten, he should never call, right? Cause then he never dominates your hands, so only flips or is, is behind. But I probably think he's fine by calling.
So do we call, uh, from small blind with ace jack offshod? Twenty big blinds, twenty two.
I think it's also very close and he can go either way, fold or shove, depends on us, if he thinks we shove like ace nine or like king queen or king queen off, you know, stuff like that, he wants to call. If he thinks we fold ace ten, he never wants to call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have a strong image until now.
And, and deciding, deciding to call a reef shove or a shove, you should uh, think about, uh, does he shove like two hands weaker than mine?
Yeah.
So for example, you have ace queen, does he shove ace ten here of ace jack off? Or does he shove king queen off? Something like this.
Heads that I dominate, or am I only flipping?
Yeah, okay, mm-hmm. Yeah, like, yeah, I, I understand it, okay. Ace seven off four, two, I think. Queen jack off. Do you open this?
I think it's a good fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's his fold indeed, the shots.
Even, even if it, it was suited.
Uh, suited, we always open.
Yeah, suited, I would always open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even under the gun, even under the gun, twenty, twenty bigs, we open, it's an open, when it's suited.
Okay.
But then we fold to a three bet, according to Raise Your Rage, always, ranges.
That's just because of the combinations. Like, we have a lot of queen jack offshod combinations, but only four suited ones, so we don't raise this hand a lot. But we have like sixteen combinations of that one.
That's true.
Okay.
Like, uh, like Raise Your Rage also says that, uh, twenty big blinds under the gun plus one, king queen suited is an open and you go broke with, uh, with, with big blind, uh, until the ba, button until big blind, so button, small blind, big blind, you go broke.
We are, we are under the gun plus two here because it's eight handed table.
Yeah, even, even, even so.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, okay. Yeah, so, good fold. And the big blinds, called. Yeah. Uh, I, I, what do you raise here normally? Because, I mean, I, I, I had, I had a learn pro poker program for a while and there Ryan says, um, as an exploit, you should almost, um, if, if the small blind limits just almost like eighty percent of hands, you should raise and you will get, it will make you money and longer. But is that correct? Because I don't know with, for sure.
But how much do you, do you raise? Like, uh, I think three X is fine, because you're playing in position, so.
I think in this spot, we want to, want to shove, if you wanna raise.
You would never raise two, four or three big blinds, you should just, if you wanna raise, you just shove.
Well, generally speaking, uh, I mean, in this, in this spot, yes, I agree, it's a, I mean, king five, ten bigs, it's a shove. Uh, but generally speaking.
I like, if you have like nine, five, you wanna raise, right, but then I would go three X. Like four X is a bit too much, like he's not gonna limp, limp fold anything to four that he doesn't for three, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Can even go like even smaller, like seven, uh, two point seven, something like that. Just because he has thirteen bigs, right?
Yeah, but then, like if, if we are forty big blinds deep, you would just go to three. Or three and a half.
Yeah. This is also a good three betting hand. Blindness, but.
King eight plus. Is it good to make four big blinds? King eight, king nine, offshod.
Yeah, it's a strong hand, uh, small blind, this big blind.
Or we, we will shove. Uh, as we will, uh, shove with king five, is it the same?
Like, uh, according to Raise Your Rage, uh, small blind should be jamming twelve bigs, his entire range, like ten bigs, not twelve, but ten, but I don't think, not his entire range, I mean, not all his hand, but he doesn't have a raise fold. He should be, yeah, sixty two percent, to be precise. He should be jamming jack duse suited, ten three suited plus, nine five suited, eight five suited, seven four suited, six four suited, five three suited. And offshod, queen four suited, jack seven, ten seven, nine seven, eight seven, and.
Matrix, do we call with king five or king eight, uh, she's jam?
If he jams?
Off, I don't think so.
But I think we call because we are, we are, I mean, why don't we, why don't we go through, why don't we put it through Equilab, right?
If she jams all, all this hand.
Let's put it through Equilab.
If she jams all this hand, we should call most of the times with.
Like, just, just, just like make it sixty two percent?
Uh, pick everything.
Yeah, sixty two percent, that's exactly how it looks, that's exactly, exactly how it looks. And then we have, uh, our hand, which is, uh, king five.
We fold king five, in my opinion.
I think a fold, yeah.
Not in Equilab maybe, but in general.
Yeah, it's forty six percent, so you just, in the best case, yeah, it's just, I don't think it's a call, I, I, I don't think I would call it.
Yes, they shove a lot, a lot tighter.
So you, so, yeah.
I mean, general. I mean, general population just doesn't shove this one, not.
Yeah, in micros they might even jam like twenty percent.
Yeah.
So king nine is a call.
Like he's gonna limp ten nine, for example. And then calling our hands.
Twenty, like twenty percent, something like, even this.
Thirty percent, I mean, he's probably jamming every pair, but he's not gonna jam every aces and kings, he's gonna slow play those.
Probably, like this is definitely not shoving, I, I think.
I think every ace is shoving though.
Uh, queen ten suited, he's definitely shoving, and king nine suited.
I don't, I don't think so.
Queen ten suited, twelve, twelve bigs.
Both ways, right?
They, they should, but I think a lot of these people don't.
They, they do jump.
And so, queen ten suited, it's a shove for the shooter.
Yeah, that's, that's, this looks reasonable, like put our aces maybe, they might slow play aces decent amount.
Yeah, aces and kings, probably limp.
Yeah, like this looks reasonable for a micro stakes player, which is obviously way too tight.
Yeah.
This, this is gonna, this is gonna be, you know, really interesting.
I'm gonna call like king ten, I guess.
Yeah, but I have king nine, so king five is.
I mean, it's, it's still gonna be a fold, right? E- even king nine is a fold, so look at that, we're, we're so dominated. How about, how about ace duce? Ace duce off?
I think it's a fold.
That's forty-two, yeah, I, I would also.
Still a fold, still a fold.
Just bec- just because of the fact that their range is just way too small. If they would shove the sixty-three percent, then yeah, of course it's a call, but they just don't do it, and if ace duce, ace duce performs really bad.
I think we, I think even ace six is a fold, but ace seven is close, ace eight is definitely a call.
Ace eight, it's close, yeah. Ace eight.
Yeah, sure. I think ace, I, I think ace seven, ace seven is, is close, ace eight, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a call.
Like, do we call king ten?
I think it's pretty close. Like.
Yeah.
The thing, the, the thing is, uh, it depends on the start, like if you have forty big blinds and he has ten, I think we can, you know, taking chances if we, if we, yeah, very, it's very close, even king jack, I think is very close.
But I, I.
But I think we'd call king jack.
I don't know if I have the heart to fold that.
You mean king ten?
Yeah, that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, if I face a BVB jam, I'm just gonna call.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think you guys also fought a lot of ace x blind versus blind. But like his small blind range is like super exploited.
It also, it also depends on the player, you know, like.
Yeah, now he likes jamming king seven suited, you know, most players will jam every king.
Like, like if he, if he jumps three times in a row, then I'm gonna, and he, the third time I have ace six, I'm probably gonna call. Even though, but I'm not gonna call the first time he jumps with ace six.
Yeah, but like ace duce performs just really bad.
Yeah.
I think. In best case, it's about fifty percent. Even against king ten and all these, it's, it's just a bad, ace duce off is just a bad hand. No?
Actually, it's not, if you take out all, all of his ace x from the equation, you're gonna see, I think we're gonna see a big difference, like if you are sure he doesn't have, you can never be sure, but like.
So, you have forty-six.
Oh.
Ace duce is just really, but ace duce off is just a bad hand.
That's really surprising for me, man, he doesn't have an ace in his range and we're still.
For me, it's not because against any pair that he has, you only have thirty percent.
Yeah, it's true, it's true.
So, it's so bad, I mean, if he hits a queen, if he has any, any other, and he hits, you, you need your ace, your duce doesn't do anything.
Exactly, exactly, that's why ace eight is much, you know, stronger than ace seven, because you beat a lot of, like you, you flip in a lot of, uh, pairs, right, of his pairs, like, uh, duce up to six.
It's gonna be a lot, it's, it's already, ace eight is already fifty, if he doesn't have an ace in his range.
Yeah, because we don't dominate any hands anymore.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, true.
He's gonna shove ace duce, right, and he's probably shoving like more eight X, like eight, seven, six, I mean, you know, these type of hands, if we don't put them in, our hands will perform very poorly.
Yeah, 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 of course, of course.
But yeah.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
I don't know if this is correct, I have no idea.
I think it is.
Yeah.
I think it is, I mean, ten big blinds, you're, you're, you're playing ten big blinds there, it's a shove, I mean, we, like we said before, even ten three, uh, I mean, suited or offsuit, uh, ten seven, even, even ten seven is a shove. Because he, because like we just saw, he, he has to, uh, to call very tight.
Okay.
It'll look better to fold.
Equilab, please. Five, right? When this tournament is in the money or close to, by the way? Like average stack wise?
Uh, I have no idea, so it's a deep stack, so we start with ten thousand, enough, which is now twenty-one, so, um. So yeah, I think we're still, uh, a long way off. We are now, how many hands in, I cannot see how many hands we are, it's gonna be like two hundred hands in?
Two hundred?
Yeah.
I think we, I think we have ninety hands on Sodik guy, he was, uh, at the beginning with us, probably ninety hands in.
Yeah, I, I don't know if he was in the, I don't know, I, I, yeah, could be. I don't know where I can see it, if I can see it. So blinds are three hundred, six hundred.
Uh, three hundred, six, six hundred, so which level is that? Uh, three hundred, six hundred.
It depends, I don't know how the deep stacks exactly look, I should, I can look it up, of course. Um. Then I have to open.
I mean, that's okay, doesn't really matter.
If you, if you just, uh, click, if you just click the, the scroll, the, the dropdown menu, we'll, we'll see how, uh, proportionally, the other one, uh, show on the left showing the hand. The le- left corner. Yeah, if you click that, uh, like, we've, we've been like twenty percent of, uh, fifteen percent of the hands, so it should be like, uh, routed in the middle, uh, when we get into the money, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
So we're still far off.
Yeah, let's keep going, uh, which gives me the opportunity to ask you guys, uh, just so, you know, just so we know, because it's important also to go through ICM and, and final table, uh, how much time do we have, how much time do you guys have, uh? Zombie, obviously. You don't mind?
I don't mind.
Perfect.
If you wanna jump to the final table at some point, I don't know if we reach it otherwise, but like ICM on, on final tables is like a different game all of the sudden.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about you, Scooter, uh, how much time do you have?
Uh, I have, I have another two hours at least.
Alright, so let's, let's go through, uh, let's go through it a little bit faster and maybe twenty minutes, thirty minutes from now, we just jump into to late game.
Yeah, do you like it rather in chips or in big blinds?
Uh, big blinds, fine, we've been going through, yeah.
I, I always play in big blinds, so. Pocket trees, off of twenty-one big blinds, I think it's a fold.
Yeah.
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 We open, uh, five, so sixes plus there, let me just check. Yeah, even sevens plus, for twenty big blinds under the gun, or.
I think we get, uh.
If we, if we, if we are under the gun plus one, then we open sixes.
Okay.
And we fold to three bet, se- sevens plus, we go broke.
Four six off is a fold against the jam, even eight big blinds.
Yeah.
Uh, three six suiteds. Just complete.
Yeah, I would, I would limp. Uh, Raise Your Rage says twenty big blinds, small blind versus big blind, you limp and you call only versus a three X, so if it's more than that, you just fold. Not a bad flop.
Then king jack, not really, no. Uh, I check behind. I mean.
That sucks.
I don't know, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I think if he checks, I mean, what, what does he have, uh, if I bet, what does he call with? I mean, yeah, if he has an ace, a queen, or if he has an ace or a queen, he bets himself, I think.
I think he checks a queen.
Yeah, uh, he checks.
It's an ace. He checks an ace sometimes as well.
Sometimes a weak ace.
Checking back is not bad.
Out, out of position.
Because we can still get it in on the river, uh, if, with, if, if he leads on turn, or if we lead on turn, right?
You can check many ace weak hands there, out of position.
Yeah, checking is actually, it's, it's decent. Good. The problem with checking though is we can't really bet the flop, eh, ever, then. Because if you check our strong hands, we can't bet our weak hands.
Yep.
Like you have to check a flush draw, for example, now. If you have one.
Hmm, just to keep balance, keeping balance, right?
Yeah, because we don't really have ace queen, right, and we don't have tens and queens and aces, maybe aces sometimes. But so our strongest hands is like ace ten, queen ten, king jack.
So yeah, I, I check again, I don't know.
I would bet, just to get value from like king queen, king tens, queen tens, you know, stuff like that, ace five.
Yep. Then I bet, small-ish on the river.
Just as a pair.
Yes, and indeed, it's a small, uh, a weak race.
He did have an ace, wow.
Yeah, I, I don't know, if, if you, like if you have an ace, do you bet on the turn, ever, leads?
No, but he could try and bet on the flop, but he didn't, I mean, look at that.
It's not, it's not bad to, to check.
He lost the minimum with the way he played his hand.
That's why you, you check on the flop, uh, with an, with an ace there, uh, but king, it's not a good card for him.
No, it's not.
That's why he checked the turn.
Well, but he lost the minimum.
I think she would have bet, uh, in any duce, three, four, five, six, eh, in many cards on the turn. But king is the worst card for him. I think.
Yeah, king or a jack is really bad for him, I think.
Yeah.
It's a nice play by him to check the flop. Most of the times.
Yeah, I like his check.
Uh, but I should bet turn and then try to get it in in the river?
Yeah, betting the ten, you get value from flush draws, uh, sometimes aces who want to call, uh, two pairs, anything.
Yeah, we don't wanna get it in though, like hi- his range is way too weak to get it in.
On, on the river then, right, or not, so you bet turn and how big, half or a little bit less?
Like three now, then it's like twelve-ish in the middle, and you have five, twelve, then you have like fourteen.
Yeah, so you bet.
I don't think we shove pot shove the river.
Yeah, we, we can even go for thin value, I mean, uh, for, four point five, five point five, that's even good.
Yeah, I think, his range is like two pairs, maximum, weak aces.
Yeah.
So, and that's not gonna pay a pot size shove on the river.
Because we wanna get paid, we don't wanna jam and, you know, have him.
Maybe even in twos, you know?
We can bet, uh, one third pot in any state, we can get some value at least.
I agree.
What do you think?
Yeah, I agree.
One third on the turn, one third on the river, uh, you can get called with many hands.
I mean, I think it's pretty hard here as well.
Good luck, uh, Point Clay, good luck, man, on your session.
I don't know what you guys.
It's not, it's not often you can, you know, play a session in study at the same time.
Yeah, if you.
Well, and it's not great. Right, if you never bluff, you should never call.
Let's see, yeah, mm-hmm.
So, uh, obviously, most of you guys, I know, you're, you're studying.
Like you should like bluff some pairs, like low pairs.
And you're putting a lot of hours into studying.
Ten nine, like ten nine is never winning.
Your feedback, uh.
No?
Or, to everyone else.
But that's, I mean, you know what is doing that, so he should overfold, he should fold like, I don't know, if he has ace king in his range, he should fold.
Do you?
Yeah, and do you, if you.
Do you want it done any differently?
Bluff like you have, uh, ten eight, yeah, not ten eight, ten nine of ten jack.
If you like, you know, how we approach the whole thing.
Pretty hard to find bluffs, he's gonna have like, we have like two bluff, pocket fives, pocket six is pocket seven, so we don't reshove pre-flop. Those are like the bluff combinations.
If you bluff sevens, six and fives, how big do you go then?
Also small, smallish.
Also small, yeah, okay. Okay.
A small bet there.
Yeah, so I would, if you're the out of position player, would overfold to the bet, like we don't bluff enough.
You can bluff, uh, the same, uh, you can make the same bet, if you have the nuts, you can make the same bet if you bluff.
Yeah, but you have to, do you need bluffing hands, right? Like, you don't really, I don't know if you turn like queen nine into a bluff, queen nine suited. Like most pairs, like shove pre-flop.
It's good to know that, man, it's good to know that, thank you.
Pocket fours, for example, shove five, sixes, sevens, eights.
You know, part of.
According to Raise Your Edge, they all shove, and calling is like jack nine, queen nine, king nine, ten nine, so we have to bluff one of those.
Part of the reason I wanted to do this live was for all of the friends of the stream, you know, to benefit, because this is very beneficial to me, and this is what we do of stream most of the times.
Be like an ace is too strong, so we just check that down. We still win versus the smaller pairs.
But I wanted to, you know, go live, uh.
Ten nine would be like one major bluff.
So that more people benefit and find, you know, like, uh.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The inspiration to go with their sessions.
Nice hand.
Um, yeah, just reshove ace queen suited. Against five. Duce.
Ooh.
That's correct, right, it's, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Have to win the olics, some point.
Doesn't look like a, doesn't look like a, a tournament that we're going to run deep so far.
Yeah, that's true. Just both lips.
Yeah, we're, we're losing everything, man, what the fuck?
My life. I'm joking, I'm joking, uh, yeah, just to call defend, missed the flop, fold.
Yep. Standard.
Is it, is it just a call, yes, right, I mean, you cannot do anything else with jack six suited, right?
Yeah, we just call, we fold.
Yep, okay.
When do we stop defending? When do we stop defending and start shoving these hands? Like if we were ten bigs, do we still defend?
Yeah.
I think the, the, the lower you go, the wider you want to defend, right?
Yeah.
Because if, if you're just, if you have jack six and there's a jack high flop, you just put it in, even if you hit a six, with three low cards, you just put it in.
Even a six, yeah, yeah. Six, nine, duce. Six, nine, deuce, yes.
Yeah, not if, if it's ace, queen six, then I don't think you will put it in, I mean, if there are not two spades, of course.
If you have queen, uh, six deuce, it's also.
Uh, I think you still get it in, you should flop a pair, you're getting it, it's just in the mix, doesn't matter.
Even if, even if it's like ace, ace queen six.
Yeah, because he still bets every fucking flop, because ace six, he's gonna bet everything, right? He's still gonna bet like deuces, threes.
Yeah.
And like king ten, king nine, king eight, king seven, king six, king five.
If ace, king six here, you just put it in.
How many big blinds do I have?
Well, we have fourteen big blinds now, I don't think we just put it in, but if we had like ten or nine, yeah.
I don't like it, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm.
Especially, especially on an ace queen or ace king flop, I, I don't like it, if it were to.
But he's not, he's not raising from under the gun though, he's raising from cutoff, so he has a lot of misses as well, like, he has, uh, queen nines, uh, eight nine.
Yes, bad time, yeah. Eight tens.
Queen tens, yeah, and, and you, and, and sometimes you get a king x to fold, sometimes. What is he gonna do if he has a pair of jacks and flop is ace, king six, and you jam?
Well, we don't open jam, right? Check.
No, no.
Yeah, we check jam, we check jam.
We check jam.
And like, if, if this guy is c-betting and the button is calling, we just fold.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's, uh, yeah, that's something I would not do now, I would never, I don't think if he, if he c-bets on this flop and, for example, the eight is a six, I just fold.
You just had your life, because you will, you will find yourself losing a lot of times. Uh, he could call with, uh, queen ten and hidden win, uh, he could call with, you know, a pair of, uh, sevens. And you'd be behind, you know, he could decide to do something crazy, you will have your life a lot of the times, but I still think it's, it's the right play. Obviously not for thirteen, fourteen big blinds, maybe for.
Yeah, we're talking about.
And we still got like backdoor spades, right? So we never, like, super dead. Like, if the turn is like the queen and spade, we're still decent, we have a decent amount of equity.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, mm-hmm. Yeah, nine, ten, fold to a four and a half X, all the cut off. Um, yeah, jack deuce folds, jack deuce is a fold, ten six, I fold, but, um, eleven big blinds, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a fold.
Yeah. So like this, like shoving, um, I really need to, need to study my, my.
What ten x would you shove?
Uh, I think ten nine, ten jack, ten queen, ten king, ace ten.
Ten eight.
Uh.
I think ten eight is bottom.
I, I don't think I would shove ten eight, but I, it could be probably okay, but I, now I, I, I didn't study, I don't, I didn't study it yet, um. So I, I don't know, but like ten nine, I would definitely shove. And all above, suited.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Ace six, shove. That's got.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Hands, yeah.
So here I have thirteen and a, almost thirteen and a half bigs, do you open shove jacks or do you just min raise?
That's super close, but, I mean, probably min raise.
Yeah.
For fourteen, I would always min raise.
Yeah.
For twelve, I would rather shove, so thirteen point three is super close, but I think min raise is fine. Like, if, if they start folding pocket eights, now it's really bad for me.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, hmm. So we get a true. Ace six suited, uh, a defense, missed the flop, fold. Three off is gonna be a fold, green three off is gonna be a fold, check nine off, is a fold.
I think.
Is it or not?
Can't resist, man, I think, okay, it folds.
Are we on the cutoff?
Yeah, I guess you can go check ten off.
Uh, jack nine, jack nine off, uh, is a fold.
If it's really close, I don't like to take him, I mean, if it's borderline, I understand that you should, but, I mean, yeah.
We should definitely do, if, if the field is soft, we always want to go for the maximum value, you know?
Yeah, okay. And king ten suited, yes, shove.
Yeah.
Off of, what was it, eleven big blinds? Twelve and a, almost thirteen. So you, you shove this as well, eh, so it's not an, or you should min, or should I min open?
Opening is only good from like under the gun.
Okay, yeah.
Just because so many people are left still in the field, you know? On button, we can still shove like up to twenty big blinds, you know, in some spots with like pocket deuces.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question on that though, uh, how do we protect our range when we open shove? Uh, I think this is definitely a leak, because from button, uh, like, Raise Your Edge has, uh, open jam for like deuces, threes, fours, ace deuce, ace three suited, ace seven, ace eight off, and that's all, so. I, I think that's a leak.
For twenty blind?
For twenty big blinds, yes, that's it, that's the only open jams Raise Your Edge has.
Eight, right? Ace eight, ace seven, ace eight, eight seven, ace three, ace deuce.
Ace, ace eight, ace seven off, ace three, ace two suited, and twos, threes and fours, that's it. So I think that's a leak.
So fours, I think fours is always an open. That's pretty bad. Just because like fours, like, the big blind is reshoving like ace deuce, ace three, ace four, off suit, and if he shoves fours, he's just gonna fold them. You know, it's pretty bad for us. But yeah, it's not, this is why we just open shove the ace eight, for example, raise calling ace eight makes us more money, but like shoving it protects our range, so it's more balanced. Like, the ace eight off, it's, it's a good raise call, makes us more money by raise calling it, just because the reshoving range will be like ace deuce, ace three, ace four, ace five, you know? And if you shove, they just fold.
Yeah, fold. Yeah, also fold. Folds. I think I fold, yeah, mm-hmm. Queen eights, I open jam for ten and a half bigs, I don't know if this is correct, I have no idea, but I think so.
Yeah, small round versus big blind, I think it's, uh, correct, I think it's correct, it is, it is, even queen four off.
It's not even close, yeah.
Queen four, a little?
Yeah, queen four off suit, it's a jam for, for, for ten big blinds.
Yep.
It's wider than that, because the big blind will call tighter.
Sixty-two percent.
Like, the big blind is not calling like king six, king five. And if he's not doing that, we can shove wider.
But he should be calling king six.
I think so, yeah, but he will not, so, doesn't matter.
Yeah, 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 I don't think they call, um, the correct ranges on big six.
I think everyone is too tight in these scenarios.
Yeah, even on, even in the higher sta, even in the higher, um, buy-ins?
But mainly, yes, just like tournament protection, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the tournament life, if you can't rebuy.
Yeah. Yep, fold. Ace three off, with twelve big blinds. I think it's a fold, or is it an open shove?
High jack? Well, it says it's a jam, but I don't hate the fold, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I don't hate the fold.
It's, it's, it's marginal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Like, uh, ten big blinds, we have twelve, so twelve is, is a lot different than ten, so ten big blinds is an open shove.
You will find a better spot for sure.
According to Raise Your Edge, we should be open jamming e- every ace x. Uh, from high ja, uh, from high jack. Deuce plus, even nine seven suited, eight seven suited, ten eight suited, plus jag eight suited, plus queens, queen eight, king eight suited, plus. And all the ten jack, queen ten and king ten off, plus. It's like thirty-one percent.
This is big blinds. Yeah. Do you defend here?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Because if he hit the top pair, we just get it in.
Alright, yeah, okay.
And we don't really have tricky spots with this hand, just like, you hit the flop, all in, we don't hit the flop fold.
Do you, do you, if you hit the flop, do you check shove or do you just shove?
Check shove, depends on the flop, if it's like four, five, six, I'd rather open shove. Just so he can't like bad call ace highs, like, if you open shove, he's gonna be in a stupid spot with ace high.
Yep, okay, mm-hmm.
So we, if we do a dunk shove.
On very particular boards we shove, but mainly just gonna check shove, like ten blind is, is a hot.
Because we are doing, we're going for like fifty, to increase our stack by fifty percent, there is, there's gonna be, you know, five bigs in there. Four point sixty plus the one, so it's gonna be five bigs, yeah. See, but, yeah.
And if you open shove, we never bluff, right? So, we always have something. At least a pair of gut shot.
Yep, no, okay. Ten eight off, folds. Six seven off, whatever. Time, I think. So ace queen, yeah, ace queen suited, it's just, just open shove.
Oh, man, look at, look at us, like, long time before the, even the bubble, I guess, and we have seven big blinds and we made it to final table.
Yep.
Wow. Just pointing that out, uh, we should never, never give up.
Never give up, yeah. Like, one double, back in the game.
Yeah, it needs.
We just pick up, we just pick, uh, our spot and.
Yep, should I reshove queen eight suited?
No.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Just because the always calls, right?
Even, even ace seven, ace eight off, ace nine off.
Ace nine, I think, just because we dominate the ace x, but you're, it's right that we don't, we shove ace seven, for example.
Ace seven, yeah.
But we want to dominate his range with the shoving. Hands. Alright, we need some, some hands soon.
Yeah. I don't know when it's gonna happen.
Card dead!
We get ace, we get aces in the big blinds.
That's like empty in it.
How about a reshove? No, nobody, six points.
So, yeah.
Oh my god, made the flash.
So we double up.
Oh my god, look at that, he almost made a straight flash, you see that?
Almost.
Yeah?
Well.
Just also shove.
What did, what did he add? Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, king do, fourteen bigs.
Yep.
I think I shove. I don't know if it's correct or not.
Him folding sucks.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah, and it's, it's not a bad hand, I mean, blind fee blind, king do suited. Yep. Fold. Folds.
Take eighteen big blinds, just shoving, pretty poor.
King queen, this is just a shove?
No, I mean, the other guy, this HM, double U guy, just shoved under the gun eighteen big blinds.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh.
That's the common leak.
Yeah, that's what you said before, that this is, uh.
If this is not like the ICM bubble, you know, if this is the money bubble and you have ace king, shoving is good, otherwise it's just not good.
So average stack is now around thirty-three, yeah, so that's, um.
Surprisingly though, he's a winning player, he has a ability of seventy-nine, uh, and he's, well, his average stake is sixteen dollars, but he has like, uh, six thousand dollars of profit in three thousand games. This HMW.
Yeah, I mean, it's a common league, a lot of players do it, I also did it.
Oh, wait.
Like, one year, one year ago.
It, it says, it says that he finished second in eight max, uh, seven fifty deep stack, so maybe this is the tournament.
This is the one I know.
Oh, finished second, this guy?
Yeah, yeah.
What the guys do here?
So the king queen queen is just an open. So it's a fifteen big blinds.
What do you make of the ability on, uh, on Sharkscope? Like, I've seen players up money that are sixty-five, then people are down to three K and. I don't know, I don't know how they calculate the ability, but I think it, it has a lot to do with the combination of the stats, like, uh, what I know for sure, Ben, is that according to the stakes you play, like, if you start playing, like, if, if somebody gives you like an, an infinite amount of bankroll and you start playing two fifteens and you're down like twenty, twenty K, you're gonna have an ability of eighty-five, probably. Whereas, uh, a winning loss or a break-even low stakes player will have an ability of.
Like, open shoving is probably easier, just because they fold some ace x that reshove, like, if this small blind has ace four suited, he's gonna reshove.
Sixty, sixty or fifty-nine or something like that.
Well, if you open shove, he folds ace four.
So if you take a, a break-even.
Also, this same thing is with like pairs, he has like pocket deuces, he's always gonna shove.
Low stakes player with a break-even, high stakes player, the high stakes is gonna have a bigger ability.
Well, if you open shove, he's never calling.
Because I've seen people in Gigi Bogger with, you know, losing like eighty thousand dollars with an ability of eighty-nine.
You deny him this equity of this, like, if he has four decked, he should shove these hands, right?
Because they just play one oh nines, two fifteens and things like that.
Yeah, okay, mm-hmm.
And I think it, I think it, 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 it weighs heavily on what ability Sharkscope is going to, uh, rank you, and I also think it makes sense because of the fact that, you know, the higher stakes, the toughest it is, and also, uh, volumes, I mean, if you, you could be losing like, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand or in water starts, but be a winning player because you're, you're, you know, you're winning over two millions in GG, you know, so.
Yeah, and you don't do that enough.
No, okay.
I don't know if that makes any sense. So, uh, for me, because I do Sharkscope a lot of people, I will look.
Yeah, yeah, I get good hands in the blinds, it's always nice.
I will look, you know, uh, average stake a lot, number of games, obviously, ROI, and then ability as well. What?
I mean, the reshuff...
We split?
Yeah, we split, we split. The reshuff, the reshuff is, is okay, right? I mean, you don't three bet from a 16 big blind stack.
No.
Yeah, I also would never. I think.
We don't have a playability, right?
We just go take the free money.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Like a lot of the times here, we will be, we will get called by words like ace, ten, ace jack, ace queen. And playing out of position is gonna suck, you know? Uh, because a lot of the times, we're just gonna win without hitting, but we, we can be exploited if we play out of position. And we both means, just because if, if, you know, they are aggressive or... Have a lot of bluffing us out of this hand.
Yep. The ace seven open, everybody folds. Ace queen, get a call. We hit the pair, we see bets, we get folds, um...
What's this, I? Yeah.
Do you always, do you always bet here? Or do you mix checking and betting, or do you never bet? Or should you always check my ace?
I mix.
You mix, yeah.
But I feel like his raise is so weak that I exploit, you're just gonna check a lot. Just so he hits like a king or like a jack or like a queen, you know?
And you can make it bigger on, on, uh, like if, if a six or a nine turns, you could bet bigger. Like if he, if he checks back.
Okay. Yeah. Can always shove together.
Okay, yeah. So we have a bunch of limpers. We have queen six, we missed the flop.
Family boat.
And we keep checking.
Yeah, I think we have the best hand here. Uh, not always though, not always.
This, this is also something that I don't get. I mean, he checks it until the river. Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe.
I think, I think he should be checking a lot because he had, because of his Kigger, you know, uh...
He plays the hand, I mean, first of all, he shouldn't be limping. Um, yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, the river is close, I think fold is fine. The one guy calls.
So for the one big blind?
Yeah.
You, ah, okay.
It's like someone called, right? So we just hope that, that the one guy has a 10 and the other guy has a bluff. Otherwise, we chop.
It's true, it's true, uh, because if... Because if, even if he has a queen X, he's probably, he's gonna probably have a better queen X, no? We do, but we chop. At best, we chop, at best, we chop.
Yeah, he's not gonna have ace queen, right?
No, but I mean, queen jack.
Yeah, but versus queen jack, we chop.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the price is fucking amazing, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, but even then, it's not always a...
It's, it's an exploitative, uh, fold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has been called to.
Yeah, this, this one big blind bets, it's, it's something I... Like would you, would you ever do it? Man, you'll never get in this, because you would never play the hand like this.
No, I, I would, I would, I would play, I don't know if you're talking about me, but I think I would play it the same way you did, and I would probably call. I would hate, I would hate myself, eh, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, the king, the king eight hand, you will never play like that.
Oh, from his, no, I would raise. Definitely raise.
He would always, he would always open raise and then if you hit your king, uh, you're not gonna be four ways, so you're just gonna see bets.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna see bet versus, uh, you know, uh, big blind. Small blind, usually when the small blind calls, they have stronger, stronger range than cutoff and button. So, uh, you know, depends, depends.
Yep. Mm-hmm. But like against the big blind call, you, I, you would never play this hand, I, I would never play the king eight hand like this.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Yeah. Fold the jack nine on the small blinds, then four we fold.
But it's so cute, it's so important to know that, uh, you know, to take this information in game and just mark them as fun players. Because we, we, we should be doing, uh, we should be note taking as much as we can.
Yeah, just to exploit them.
Yeah.
You know?
I don't do it enough, eh? I should do it more.
I, 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 I wasn't doing it until, I don't remem, and I, and I hate myself for not remembering, but, uh, you know, a guy came to the stream and goes to me, "Matrix, why don't you just take notes? You just, you just, you just complain and you don't take notes." And he was right. He goes, "Sorry for telling you that, I'm, I'm right, I'm, I'm like, you know what, you're right."
It's like you say, it's like you say sometimes that you will need a secretary.
I need a secretary, exactly. I, I do say that, but, but then I take the note. I did...
It's unbelievable.
There's so many, but it's so, also it's so important to have that orange tag on them for me.
Yeah.
But sometimes in, sometimes they will have it, you know, even fun players have aces. But...
Like, I mean, everybody that I see limping, I immediately mark as a limper. Instantly.
I also have it on my tab, on my, uh, hat, the, uh, the limp stat. So now I know if they are limpers, so I don't, if I don't take the note, I know he limps.
You can mostly see it in the, if your VP, if their VP is pretty high and the raise first inning is like really low, then you, then you know already that they are just very passive.
I think limp fold is better to have this stat. Rather than just limp.
Yeah, if I need the stat, you need, you need a lot of hands to, to make it a decent stat, so if you need it, you can find it in the dropdown, I mean... These fields are, are so big, um, I think this tournament had 1,200 runners, uh...
Like, like Ben, I have a stat...
You don't play too many hands with the same...
Of limp percentage and, uh, I, I don't remember if it's limp call or limp fold. And fold to a raise, you know? So I could, I, I have one of those. Because it doesn't make sense to have limp call and limp fold to a raise, because one, it's either one or the other.
Similar to other limper, you know?
So it helps me a lot, so I know, oh, oh, this guy limped, then I can raise him all day. And if they jump, I can then, I can then fold, you know?
Yeah, we would always call shoves.
Like I folded final table guy yesterday, like, uh, a guy on the final table couple of days ago, he limps from the cutoff. Small blind, uh, completes, I have his queen, I make it 4.5X being out of position, he jumps and I fold. Easy, you know what I'm saying?
Not a good call, right?
Yeah, we just fold. Because you're out of position, worst position, we go four ways, at least even five ways, or seven is never good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I, I, I should make a limper tag. Should be an orange tag.
Ace seven three and we just like, what to do?
It's true.
This is something that I now not would do, just because, yeah, I mean, Raise Your Edge, right?
We just lose the hand.
Yep.
I think.
Indeed. Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not even gonna look, I think so. Doesn't even matter enough.
Yeah.
I, like now, I would, I would never call this now. Even from the big blind, I would not call it.
Uh, from the big blind, you can call, because your price is pretty good then. And it's an easy call, but in this mobile, it's just not a good call.
It's helpful, it's definitely helpful. Limpers mostly, I mark as fish. They limp fold and it's passive fish. That's also, that's also accurate. Like if, if I somehow get limpers to give me a dollar, I will be, like every limper, every systematic limper, not every guy who even linked mass, uh, once, gives them, gives me one dollar, I'll become like, uh, I think richer than, uh, Bill Gates. I missed this hand. Oh, what happened here? I didn't, I didn't see that.
So we call queen nine, queen nine off from a small blind shove? But I don't know, so it's, he, he opens shoves from the small blinds and I, I call it queen nine off, but I don't know if it's a good call. I...
Well, we, we've been through this spot before and...
I think we call queen jack. Like, we're out if we lose, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, if you have 10 big blinds, I would say yes, but...
I think we, I think we are in the money right now. I think we should be in the money. Average stack 8,000, so maybe...
Yeah, I think we are.
So yeah, so maybe that's after, like eight times, the starting stack should be in the money. So maybe you just, you know, decided to double up or nothing at this point, move.
Yep. I don't know where to move. What, uh... Yeah, I don't know if I should go. I don't think I should call that. I think it's a mistake.
Yeah.
But we get lucky, I mean...
Yeah, we got lucky, we got, got double ducked.
Well, we didn't get lucky, we just had the best hand.
We had the best hand, true.
Yeah, but I mean...
If he shoves jack five, we should always go.
Yeah, but he should not shove jack five off.
Depends if he thinks we fold or not, then shove. True, but... Yeah, I mean, pretty surprising.
Yeah, this... Should we call it? I mean, first of all, I don't, do I limp? I don't think so, right? I should... Um, we should be open raising?
25 bigs, did, did you limp?
Yeah, I limped, yeah, I should be...
Uh, I don't know about 25 bigs, but, uh, 20 bigs is an open jam. 20, and...
20 and, oh, 30 bigs is also one.
And 30, you raise and, uh, call a three bet. I don't know if you call a jam, though. I don't know, maybe, what do you got, what do you, what do you think, Zombie?
Yeah, I think raise call.
You call a show, uh, a jam here?
Well, I don't love it, but I don't think I fold, I mean, I probably limp shove this end, to be honest. And if he shoves, I still call.
So you would normally limp and if he, if he raises, you shove?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, yeah, now, then you call a shove as well.
But, but he should never jam, he should just raise, call if he has a monster hand or something. But this guy just jumps, like 30, 25 bigs affected, so what do we do?
Probably close to zero again, like we could, can call, we can fold, don't make a lot of money there.
Yep.
Like if he starts jamming like king ten, we should always call. If he only has like duses, fives and ace six, we should fold. Because then we don't dominate enough.
Yep. Okay.
But like he never has aces, and if he does it with ace king, ace queen, like, I don't know. GG.
Yeah.
But I feel like I always have 50% at least, you know?
Hmm.
Yeah, he, he probably won't shove like ace queen, ace king, aces, queens, he just raises, right?
I, I, I don't know what, what, uh, what, uh, stage of the tournament it is, but I would find it very hard to call here. And also, I would find it very hard to fold. I think it's a very, very, I, I don't know, maybe we...
Yeah, I, I thought about it, uh, a pretty long time.
This is very interesting. Very interesting.
Yep. So I fold, um...
Did you fold? Did you not fold it?
Yeah, I did.
I don't hate it, I don't hate the fold, because with king queen, it's like we said before, it's a powerful hand with blocking screens and ace kings and queens. You know, but on the other hand, we, we don't dominate hands, right? Don't dominate a lot.
It depends if he shoves, if he shoves hands like king jack and king ten near the...
Yeah, but...
But I...
I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if, maybe he does, but I don't...
I also don't know.
We also block those. Like I think he's, I think he's shoving there, I don't know, maybe pairs of sevens or sixes or...
Yeah, I think I need like these more pairs and some ace six, like ace two is... And versus ace six, king queen is not ahead, right?
No, no, indeed. Okay. Folds, then five is also fold, four, five, ten, three, queen. Nine, five, yeah, three bet we folds. Uh, queen jack we open shove for 23 bigs. That's probably a mistake, that should be a raise call.
I believe shove is probably best.
Just like king queen, like king.
But if he shoves this time, I guess we call.
Because it's suited, right?
Yeah, yeah, and because he did it already before, so...
But, but, but pre-flop, if it's suited, what, what does it give us? Like 2% extra? You know, our...
Yeah, but it also is better like post-flop. So we win more, more often.
Yeah, you will have, if you don't, if you don't shove, I mean, if it's not all in pre, I think you just, it has a lot more playability, so you will bet more flush draws that you otherwise won't.
But if we jump, if we jump, playability doesn't count, I mean...
No, 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 that, yeah, I understand, but if you jam, it doesn't make, I don't know what the percentage is, uh, what the difference is.
Yeah, I think the difference is like 3%, 2 or 3% a suited hand to an offsuit. I don't know if it's always the case, but for some reason, that's what I think. We could just try it, see. But it's okay, I mean, you can go ahead, I'll try and see it on my own. Like we'll up there.
Yeah. I don't know the difference. We can, we can do it, but I don't know how to do that.
Uh, we can assign him a range and just see the difference, you know, maybe assign him like, uh, I don't know, whatever kind of range, just give him like, uh... Um, let's say, uh, what should be, what should he be calling there? 15%?
Um...
Maybe, maybe 20% he should be calling, let's say. So... We have king, jack off, then we have 45.54%. 45.54, but if it's suited, 45.54, if it's suited, it's 48.31, so it's around 3% more.
Okay.
Which is, which is important if, you know, if 3% is obviously very important, it's not like, but it's still 3%.
Yep, okay. Yeah, but I don't think, I think we should not shove here, we should not open shove, so we should...
Yeah, I agree.
Um, just raise or limp? And if he ra, if you limp and he raises, it's shove.
Well, uh, based, based on, uh, Raise Your Edge, it's, uh, you just raise and go broke to a three bet.
Yep, indeed. That's what Raise Your Edge said, says.
And again, we are, we are, you know, we are looking, uh, Raise Your Edge, uh, um... Ranges, because we, this is the course we are studying and this is the ranges we are, we, we built our game upon and, you know, we wanna be balanced, as balanced as possible, and, you know, if, if someone plays, you know, their own ranges, then that's, that's fine, but I think it's very difficult to create your own ranges, so... But whoever, you know, some people will, you know, will go, will through other ranges, like other courses... But whoever, you know, some people will, you know, will go, will throw other ranges, like, other courses, which is also fine.
Yeah, we shouldn't stick to the, only this ranger, because this ranger is like GTO wise. You know, if there's a guy that's super passive, we shouldn't stick to our ranges. Or the same goes if he's super loose, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should, you should deviate from your standard ranges to the opponent's.
But yeah, it's a good idea to have in mind always, what the range is.
Yep.
Happens here. 3.5.
3.5 and I open, and I reshove 24 big blinds.
He opened big here, like, uh, 3.5 is quite big. Before we see the hand. What, oh, okay, we, it's okay.
I guess.
I, I, I would... I don't know, I would probably, I don't know if I would jam here, 3.5x.
What do you guys think he has? As a guess?
Uh, I, I would probably call, see the flop, because he could, he could have better aces than us, against jack as queen. He could have a pair, like, a pair of seven, I mean, eights, or nines, or tens, or whatever, uh... But he could also...
But he could also have ace five, ace four, ace three, and ace...
Yeah, he could also have, you know, so I would, I mean, calling, you never realize your equity with ace seven off. But on the other hand, I don't think he's, he's folding to a jam versus, uh, I mean, uh, according to his opening. Uh, opening, I mean, from my experience. I don't know enough about this guy, but opening 3.5x usually indicates a strong hand. So, is this the hand I want to go all-in with? I don't know, I don't know. What, what do you guys think?
I think I don't want to shove. I think his range is just too strong with 3.5x. But like, if he min raises, we just always shove.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, I mean, that's a pretty nice flop, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah. We got lucky.
Ace jack, there you go. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
Ben says, obviously, because 3.5x on bottom is not GTO. I think this guy, this, I mean... He shouldn't be opening, you know, 3.5x with your, even with your ace jack. Right? Uh, but he did, and he, that indicates, like... That indicates, uh... That gives us an indication of his hand. Alright? Ben says, if I know, uh, flop is coming, jack seven, seven, slam, duck, jam. Yeah, anyway, it's good to get lucky, you know what I mean?
Uh, king queen suited and the small blinds, under the gun opens. Under gun plus two, um, MP is it, I think, calls, uh, we have king queen, should we... Squeeze? I don't know. Or just call?
Should call him is fine.
What did you say, Zombie?
It's not terrible. But I think mainly calling. If not, always.
I think you want to, you want to, uh, again, it depends on your opponent, like, or the other players. I think you want a three bet king queen off, rather than one king queen suited.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then flop comes eight, six, duses, um... Get a rather big... Bet, uh, and we fold.
Like, like he has pocket tens.
It's, it's exactly what we did before with pocket tens, right? But what if there was a diamond out there? What would we do?
One diamonds?
Yeah.
I, I don't think I call. I just fold as well.
Is there any diamond that, uh, would make you call? Like, jack of diamonds, or ten of diamonds?
Where's the pot then? Check eight, six?
Yeah, instead of eight. Uh... Yeah. But this bet, but his bet is going to make it even weirder, because, yeah.
Empty.
Yeah, then me, yeah, then it's close, I think, I don't know.
Big bet.
I don't, I don't think I would call. But that's what I would do. I don't know what's correct or what you should do.
It's a big bet. I think I would call with, uh... With backdoors here, maybe 2.5. I would call 2.5 big blinds, once.
Yep.
And then I'll always check, no matter what. Even if a king lands, I'm just going to check call, and... You know, when you're out of position, you have to check call, check fold a lot, right?
Yes, you... Yep, so... We faults. I don't know.
Fold red?
Hmm?
We just fold the jack duses?
I, I can't he, I can't hear you, Zombie.
We just fold the jack duses, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Faults, four. Faults. Big blind, four. Defense. Check, check, wait. And check, check on the river. Yep, I don't know.
Yeah. What is he going to call?
Yeah, I mean... It's all, he has, all a better king or a hand like this, where he has nothing.
Yeah.
He could also have, he could also have, he could also have sevens that he checks on the... But, I mean, I, I, I don't think I get anything to call here that is worse than my king four.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a pretty bad bet from, from the queen six. Queen high, good enough.
Would he call with queen high?
Oh, queen high should just check to turn.
Yeah.
Make sure we never fold a pair, if we don't fold ace high. So, what is folding?
Yeah, he doesn't have any, any, any equity, or he should, the only thing that he can hit is a queen, and even then, it's not the best.
I mean, the queen high is good enough, you know, if we have like, I don't know, five, six, we wins.
Yep.
But if he bets, we never fold anything that's... That's, you know, that he doesn't beat.
So would you go for value here, Zombie?
No, just because the king is pretty bad. So like, he, he can't call with queen high, because he shops, you know?
Yeah, so the only thing that, that's maybe calling is ace high?
Yeah, but he shouldn't bet that on turn, right? Like, ace ten should always check.
Because you, you, you don't want, you don't want him to bluff, like, what, how, let's say you decide to bet.
What do you do if he shoves?
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Like, if he's a good, if he's a good player, he's jamming here, like, if you, if you bet.
If you bet, if you bet river and he jams, you cannot do anything, you have to fold. I think.
Yeah.
See, I think that. He has to check a, jack on the flop, and then he has to bet the jack on the turn, and then he has to... Check the jack on the river again to check shove.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, my, what, me with my king, I should never bet the river here.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But he never, he never has a jack, but he might have a seven, I guess, and sometimes has a better king. Like, he, he still has, like, king queens and king jacks. So I don't mind a check.
Yep.
But he never has a jack.
Okay.
Can you, can you go through that dropdown, uh... Just, just making a little bit of time management here for you guys, uh, special for you, Skoda, because you said you have to leave. Uh, okay, so we have a lot way to go. Do you guys, I think now is a good time to, uh... Uh, maybe, yeah, maybe move a little bit towards the final table? What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Like, do, do you, do you remember the stacks? You had on final table, like, how many chips, uh, like...
I, I can tell you exactly what hand I had.
When you, when, when you made final table, you remember?
Yeah, uh, this was the first hand on the final table.
Oh, we can go a little bit before?
No, no, no. It's earlier.
You have aces.
Not this one.
You have aces before that. Oh, not you, Marco, I don't know.
The a, the aces were already on the big blinds, uh, were already on the final table.
Yeah, we could go a little bit behind, like, uh, like, a lot behind, actually. Because ICM comes in to play... Yes, yeah.
Yes, let's start. I don't know how many are left, I think we are...
You think that's good?
It's going to be two tables here.
Zombie, guys, you think that's good?
That's fine.
Okay.
Still a lot of hands, right?
Yeah, yeah, we still have a lot of hands. So, yeah, ace queen off, uh, just open. Excuse me?
Can you adjust the hat? Like, we don't see the big blind from the Nidai guy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Or just raise, take it?
Yeah, just raise, take it, yeah. Eight, six, we faults. Um, we are one of the... Yeah, here it's still okay, on the final, on this table, it's still okay. But I know that, um, on the other table, uh, there were a lot of big stacks. So we weren't, I think we were... Fifth, fourth or fifth from last.
Hmm. 30 bigs is still enough, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think I, the average is like 50. Because it's a deep stack, and then to the end, it always, they always have the, the really big stacks. So... There are some 100 big blind stacks.
I mean, we can see, there's like, uh, there's, uh, the average is 500,000, which is, uh...
That's only on the, it's only on the table.
Oh, on this table?
Yeah, it's only on the table.
Oh, okay.
So I have almost 500, but that's only on this table, is 500. So it's not for the tournament.
Like, the average on this table is like 31 bigs, so...
Yep.
You're right.
Ten eights on the small blind, ten eight off on the small blind, faults. Um... Jacks. Just open, we get to faults. We faults, should we open? I don't think so.
No. Close.
I, I really cannot hear you very well.
Who? Uh, Zombie, I guess.
Yeah.
Why, not loud enough?
No, no, you're, you're good, you're good.
Like, it's breaking away sometimes.
I think it's, uh... I think it's, uh, I think it's when we, uh, if we... If two or three of us are talking at the same time, or if, uh, the mic is activated by two people, I think it overshadows you. I think that's the case.
Okay.
So what were you saying about the eight, five?
Five is open on the button.
On the button, yeah.
Hmm.
Hmm? We fault. Queen seven, we don't open. This is not defend, or is it? Yeah, I folded, I don't know, I, I think it's not a defend late. Or is it?
We called this two x, I guess, yeah.
So we do, we do defend?
We do defend.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't hate folding.
Yeah.
It's like the bottom.
I think, I think this hand is going to put you in a lot of, uh, spots. Like, if you don't feel comfortable playing this hand out of position... Then I, I, I think it's okay to fold it. Because, you know, sometimes... And, uh, I feel like I, I, I need to stress this out. Sometimes we, uh, you know, we tell each other, yes, this is an open, this is a fold, this is a, but when it comes to defending out of position... Uh, like, if I was, if I was traveling back in time and find myself when I first started playing the game, I would tell... Him exactly that. Fault if you're not comfortable playing, you know, post-flop. Like, uh... Like... What are you going to do with a eight, queen, nine flop, or queen, jack, eight, or queen, jack, five, or... You know, are you going to call once?
I'm definitely calling once, yes.
Yeah, gonna be some tough spots, but also some practice, right?
Yeah, but he cannot, I mean, if he doesn't hit, he's not, he cannot put, with his stack, he also cannot put a lot of pressure. He can try, but he should not put a lot of pressure with his stack, most, with ace high, for example. He should also check a lot.
No, no, I've been in spots that I was sweating bullets, even with ace, with ace, uh, with an ace in my hand and an ace on the board. I've been in spots where, you know, people would double battle, triple battle, and biting my teeth, then calling, because I am a calling station... To win the hand, you know, with ace, with, with a top pair. People, if they know, they, you know, they, they can put you to spots, if they are good players.
Like, just put him like two x pot on the river, just, you know, if it's the final table, final two tables... Just put him to the spot, like, overbet the river, you know, in a good spot. So good. You can exploit people on the final table, a lot.
Yeah, I think it's mostly the opposite, that I get exploited, but yeah, I mean, that's...
It's always like that, if you just like lose three hands, you just like always feel like you're just getting old.
Yeah, but I mean, if it...
Or outdated, which is not the case.
If you cannot call, you can't call, I mean, if you don't have the hand, you don't have the hand, what can you do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just call the big blind three times, miss it, and just move on.
Yeah.
I don't know who said it, though, but I think it was one, one of the viewers, one time I was playing, like, final table. I don't know if he, if he told it that to me, or when, if, when I was watching someone else, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but... He said something that stuck to me, he goes, "The deeper you are, you check more." That was really interesting. Like... The deeper you are, you check more, you check more flops, you check more turns, you know? What do you guys think about that, as a...
I mean, as a rule? Yes, or is it good to check more? Or do you think you're just so scared that we check?
I, I don't think it's, it's about being scared, but, you know, when you're... When the ICM comes into play, people play tighter, and people will have strong hands, you want to put control a lot. Like, you have, let's say you have ace queen, you know, uh... A guy raises, ace queen suited, the guy raises, you three bet him, and he calls. Probably big blind calls as well, whatever. And then the flop is seven, nine, queen, rainbow, do you see bet? Like, three ways. And what do you do if they shove? Like, uh, you know, like, uh, things like that, maybe they hit the sets, maybe they have like, you know, or... Queen, ten, uh... queen-ten, uh, I don't know, queen, queen-nine-ten, you know, I mean, I don't know, I just, uh, it just sticked to me what he said, I, I, maybe I'm not giving the right example, but just stick to me that.
I think if it's, if it's a really wet board and you only have top pair, I, you can check a lot, uh, on final tables.
Yeah.
Um, but if you, if you, if it's like a really dry board and it's queen-seven-three and you have ace queen, I mean, you're not gonna, you, you maybe gonna check for, to bet a later, later streets, but I think you just bet, and if he shoves, yeah, I mean, if he has king-queen, he's also shoving, and if he has sevens, he has sevens, I mean, what can you do?
But he also has, uh, aces, you know? And kings.
Yeah, well, then it's your time to go, yeah, I mean, I know.
Can still bet fold to good hands, you can still bet fold ace queen, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say that if you are, if, if, if you are sixty big blinds and you're chip leading and he is second and, and chips, or you're second and he's first, then then ICM comes in a lot of play, but if he's, I mean, if you don't have to call off half your stack, I think you just call.
And also, and also, let's say you're like the second in chips and you're, you know, you're heads up. Like, you're playing a heads-up pot with a chip leader, right? You're gonna be checking a lot, you don't want to build the pot, even versus this guy, even versus, even a top pair, even in situations like you three-bet, he calls, uh, you know, just wanna, and let's say the, the rest of the table, they're short, like, nine big blinds, twelve, seventeen, and you have like forty and he has like seventy. You just want to, you know, uh, you know, to take it to showdown, don't invest a lot, and, uh, you know, just keep your, uh, keep your, keep being in, in the shot to be, to be able to win it, you don't wanna end up with twenty-two big blinds after the, that pot and, you know?
I mean, he, he, he's gonna say, he's gonna feel the same way if you would be aggressive to him.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
He's scared, and that's the thing, I mean,
It's true.
It's so much easier, it's so much easier if you are the aggressor. I mean, you don't have to do it with complete bluffs, of course. But if you are the aggressor, they feel also the same, they also think you will have the sevens on the seven board. And they will also, I mean, especially if it's not the best, especially if it's not the best players, I mean, good players will think differently and will think about your range and will think about your bluffs you have and, and other stuff, but I mean, they are also gonna be afraid if you show aggression.
Yes, you guys are right.
It goes both ways, of course, I mean, if you, I mean, if he shoves fifty big blind and you only have top pair, I mean, what are you gonna do?
We just fold.
I, I just, I just, I just fold and you say, ah. Yeah, yeah, good for you, and we, next time it's my turn, yeah, I mean, but he's not gonna shove on you blindly, he's not gonna, nothing.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, he's not gonna shove fifty big blinds with ace-high, for example. He's not gonna do that, definitely not on a final table. Or he's completely whacked. Which is possible, of course, but he should not do it. And if he does it, well, how, good for you, and you just fold and go to the next hand. Fives we fold, I don't know if it's correct or not. Against the lander, gonna open, two tables left.
Well, technically, if, from my point of view, he's, he shouldn't be raising anything worse than fives in terms of pairs, so it's sixes plus.
Calling for seven-nining, I don't think it's profitable in this pot.
Yeah, we have also two shoving stacks behind.
Yep.
Don't wanna call fold.
We did fold, he shoves, call eights against ace-jack.
Yeah, that, see, that's, that's his opening range right there.
So we get a jack-off, we open, two-point-two, everybody folds. Uh, yeah, this should be an open, I think.
Uh,
Open.
Do we open it? Do we open that? Well, it's mid, middle position, right?
Yeah, but it's now it's ICM, so we can't really look at the ranger, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it, exactly, so it's bottom range in pre-ICM, pre-ICM, so ICM-wise, so how, I think that gives me the opportunity to ask this, uh, Zombie. When we are playing ICM, how, like, regularly we open twenty-two percent from this pot, so how tight do we open?
We just like flick out every, like, bottom range hand. You know?
So we just, so we just trim all the, all the bottom ranges, so like, uh, we go ten-nine suited, and jack-nine suited, and queen-nine suited, king-seven.
It depends also on the table, like, if, if they three-bet you like crazy, just like, when you even fold like jack-ten, you know? Just not worth it. Like, you, you winning three big blinds, it's, it's not worth it opening. You know, if you have like twenty-six blinds, it doesn't really matter. Then if you have like twenty-three blinds, still have to be pairs after that, right?
So do you believe that it's, it's better for us to, uh, to fold, you know, more and get, get, and, and, and give ourselves the opportunity to double up, double up bigger?
Open more with the short stack, and we open a lot more with the big stack.
Makes sense.
Because, uh, because of the reshoving.
Yeah. And like, we don't really wanna raise and then fold, you know? And if we raise and take, it doesn't change the distribution, you know, like, we still have like thirty-one big blinds, doesn't matter. But losing like a lot, it doesn't matter.
You would leave out like all of this. Like, all the bottom.
Yeah, it depends on the table, like I said, like, if, if they don't three-bet enough, I still go wide-ish. Like, if they don't care about it.
Even ace-six suited, I would leave out. Probably, probably even ace-seven suited. Like, ace-four, ace-five suited, no, but ace-seven, I would leave out.
And on final tables, we also have limping ranges all of the sudden, right?
Yeah, I, I-
What, what, yeah, I would like to, I would like you to talk to me a little bit about that. Talk to everyone, actually, even people watching about that. When do we start have limping range? Like, four, four hundred, three hundred?
Okay. If we, no, the handed is, is whatever. The big blind is like the important thing, if we can't really like call a three-bet, but don't wanna fold, we limp. Like, if, if we, for example, have ace queen and we limp, let's say we have like twenty-three big blinds, and someone isos, we can easily shove, because he can still fold, right? But if we open ace queen and they three-bet, they're less likely to fold versus when they three-bet, right? Because they get a good price. So their range is a lot stronger. Like, if they iso, they still have like king-ten-offs, king-jack-offs, jack-ten-offs, you know, stuff like that. And if you shove, they just fold and we win. In these ICM situations, you always want to push the pressure on the opponent. Like, you wanna shove on them, not, you don't, you don't want to be the guy that gets shoved on, you know?
Yeah, you have to fold way too much if you get shoved on.
Yeah, you just can't call, you can't call even some ace-kings in some spots, you know?
Yeah.
So that's why we just like, for example, limp, limp-jamming ace-king is in some spots a lot better than raise and four-bet-jamming.
I would love to, I would love to see the-
It's so tight.
I would love to see the ranges, you know, to, to, to get my eyes on limp, limping ranges in, 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 in terms of, uh, positioning and everything.
I think your limping range, your limping range is like Zombie says, it's just, um, the things you cannot, you cannot really shove against the three-bets. I think you open ace-king, ace-king off and ace-king suited, and ace-queen suited, but ace-queen off, ace-jack off, you just limp and call the iso and see flop, or shove.
Make stuff. But like, if you have like a hand like king-ten suited, we can limp and then iso. We get iso'd and then we can call, see a flop. Rather than we raise, he's three-bet, we have to fold, can never call. Same goes with like jack-ten, ten-nine.
I haven't thought of that too much, uh, before, thanks for the insight, which one, Ben, which, uh, of the limping?
Yeah, okay.
Those are like intense ICM situations when like a lot of short stacks are there, you know? You can't really raise, call, then you can do it. But like, final two tables, you can still raise, a decent amount.
Yeah, that's of course different if you are the big stack, then you just-
Yeah, if you're the big stack, you just go crazy, you open four-dos off sometimes. If they have like twenty blinds and you have sixty, you just open almost any two.
Yep. Because of the fact you get way too, I mean, everybody ranges are so much tighter.
Yeah, they can't do shit, like, they can't do anything with like ace-three, you know? And if they do, they just can't.
Yeah, they can, they cannot jam it on you, I mean, what can they do, they just have to fold it.
Yeah.
I think I found, I, I, I think I, I found myself in one fa- final table, uh, a couple of months ago, when I was playing the sit-and-go's with like, an, uh, o- open shove of any two spot. I, I think I had like, like seventy big blinds and they had like, all, they, they all had below, uh, twelve. I was shoving every hand, oh my god, it's so, it's so beautiful. Yeah, so nobody, nobody's gonna call you, because they all want, you know, they all wait for the guy to, to call and lose, you know? So, that's so beautiful, you know?
I think getting to a final table with a really, really big stack is like the most fun you can have.
Yeah. But if you can, if you can have them all below twelve big blinds and you have like eighty, seventy, oh my god, and you get to shove any two, like, I think it's the dream position, to be able to shove any two. And still, it's not any two, like, you, you, you shouldn't be shoving, you know, five-dos off, but it's still beat.
Some spots you should.
Just having fun. So, okay. Uh, ace-five in the big blind, we defend, we miss almost everything, and we fold, two sip it.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, ten-nine suited. Uh, should we do anything else than limp, or should we, should we raise?
I think limping is the best.
Yeah. Me too.
Uh, check, check, five, bet, fold.
It's a general hearts.
Yeah, I don't know, somewhere. Uh, doing, should, I, I should probably bet flop or not?
No.
I mean, we can.
I think we, I think we, uh, I think we blow, uh, we, we show, I mean, I think we, you should check raise flop, instead of, uh-
High can still be good, like, he's not folding ace-high. I mean, he doesn't really have ace-high. Never folds a king, never folds a queen.
Yep.
So some jack-high might fold, but mainly we got the best hand, like, he still has like eight-five in this range.
Yep. And then, uh, on the turn, we just bet.
We just check, I think, we just check.
We should just check again.
Yeah, just for the same reasons, like, ten-high might be good, and like, if you get check-raised here now, or, or like raised, sucks.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, it sucks.
And he's never folding ace-high, he never has ace-high, and yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that-
He might fold some, some jack-high, like, jack-seven might fold.
I understand that if, if I bet and he raises, I, I have to fold and it sucks, because you have to-
It doesn't really-
You get denied of all the equity you still have.
Well, you still have outs, you, you-
Yeah, but if I bet two, if I, if I bet two and I get raised, do I still call?
Uh, why not? You have, uh, like, uh-
But why bet?
Yeah, I, I'm not saying bet, but since you did, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to call a raise.
You can go in the size, I guess.
Depends, yeah, I mean, if it goes like eight, uh, that sucks.
But the, the power of ten-high, it's good, ten-high is still good, often enough.
Yeah, so I should just check here and-
Check call, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Or bet the flop, both are fine.
Okay. Uh, jack-seven suited, life out. Yep. Fold. Folds. Um, yeah, I fold ten-three off, it's just pretty bad. I think, uh, is it close? You would defend.
I mean, if he goes even, I mean, it's super close, I don't mind the call.
Although he's not-
I wouldn't fold ten-five.
Also, he's not going too, too big, you know, like, uh,
Just make this more. And in position versus, um, probably weaker player, so just gonna flick in the call, but I, I, I don't mind the fold.
Uh, surprisingly, I just noticed that it's, it's a fold, even ten-five is a fold. Thirty big blinds, small blind versus big blind.
Yeah, but versus a reasonable range, or like assume bedside, bedside three-X.
Assume, yeah, you're right, assume it's a three-X, yeah, so two-point-five could go to ten-five, ten-four, even maybe.
Yeah, I would call ten-five for sure. But not sure about ten-three, I don't mind folding.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're like,
I think-
I mean, the only thing that is good about this hand is that you're in position, that's it.
Yeah, but that's-
That's it, yeah, yeah, you don't have playability with this hand, you have, like-
Yeah, but you can bluff a lot.
I think this is final table problem as well.
Yeah. I don't mind a fold, maybe fold is even better. But like, I would go for the triple barrel bluff here sometimes, you know?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's, but that's something I would never, I probably would never do, in this pot, but I think, yeah, that's, that's what, I mean, that's what you makes, uh, you, I, I,
Yeah, if I take me once, I'm-
A lot of good players will, will just call here and make it into something and for, I mean, I'm not really that confident, uh, post-flop.
Yeah.
Then it's a good, then it's, then it's a good decision to fold, uh, I mean-
But like, ten-three suited, I would always call, always.
Yeah.
But ten-three off is just, I mean, Yep.
Okay, it's one of the weakest hands, for sure.
Yep. Check three, we bet, we get the call, we check, he checks.
Uh, what we, did we, what did we do? Three-X, pre-flop?
Uh, yeah.
I think limping, limping is better.
Limp, call?
Limp fold.
Limp fold, yeah. Okay, yeah. And then, this sip it, check.
And then just give up.
Yeah.
I mean, on the turn, you can-
On the turn, we should maybe, yeah, do we, oh, he calls. Yeah, uh, could be, I don't know.
Yeah, I like the check, actually. Like, he's not gonna defend a lot of dos-X, and he's always gonna defend the ten.
Yeah, ten-seven, outspades.
Seven-X might fold, but like, this is like the best bluffing card. So he might even call a seven-eight type of hand, you know? And he still has some ace-X that called, so I like to give up, actually. But if the river is like a queen, I have to, we have to bluff.
We have to bluff. Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Um, then the next hand, then dos-off, yeah, fold. Jack-five suited. Uh, yeah, five- Uh, yeah, I fold, I don't know if this is, I think it's probably a fold, right? 20 big blinds, final table level, I think I'll never open some, I, I would never open this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, fold is fine.
Yeah, okay.
Like just go a lot tighter now.
Yep. So queen 3 is also gonna be fold, king 10 on the, in the big blinds. Yeah, we fold to the 3 bet from the small blinds, um, do, we, we don't, we never shove here, right?
Yeah, we don't shove.
Yeah, okay.
He should never iso raise, he should always shove. If he wants this 3 bet. But I guess he has aces, so it's fine.
I don't know. Yeah, it's gonna be something like that, queens and jacks.
Queens and jacks, yeah.
And then this is...
Final table, right?
Yeah, yep, I think so.
So we got a decent spot, I would say. Okay.
Sorry. We duse, we fold. Ace queen, we raise. 3, the big blind 3 bets, we jam, we get golds, we win the flip.
Is this the fold?
Uh... I think, I, I cannot, I, I can't really hear you for the moment, Zombie.
This is the fold, the ace queen.
Is it the fold?
For sure, yeah. Just because there's 3 bet range from the big blind versus under the gun, we'll be insanely tight.
Okay.
I mean, I don't even know, he should never 3 bet call, he should shove. Did he shove? No, he's 3 bet, right? Yeah, that's not good. He should shove or call, he should never 3 bet call. With this 3 bet call, your range is so strong.
Yeah.
And yeah, he never bluffs, basically. Like we hope to, him having like jacks.
Like knowing, knowing the hand he has, uh, he should never 3 bet, but, uh, the fact that he does makes it, uh, like, makes it, uh, his range even stronger. But would we call his, his 3 bet?
No, we just fold.
We just, we, we even fold the...
We just always fold versus 3 bets, but this is like the perfect example for limp shove here. Like we, this, we hate this, but if he like raises and we shove, we like this a lot more. You know, like this, if he puts 7.6 big blinds, his range gonna be super strong. If he puts in like 3.5 big blinds or 4 big blinds, this range will be weaker. But like, I think this is just always a fold, in my, my opinion.
Okay, yeah. So...
What do you guys think?
So would you, would you limp? Would you ever limp under the gun with this hand?
Yeah, I limp shove is like super, super good here.
Good to know, man.
This is the example that you give exactly, like, uh...
Yeah, you have 20 big blinds, you don't wanna go broke.
Yep.
But you still have a strong hand, you have to play, you can't really fold, right? But if you decide to raise, we just fold, to re-raise.
Yep, so I didn't, and I got lucky with the flip.
Yep.
Okay, so ace 9. We just complete, we just call, we miss C bets, um, I think, yeah, I call. I think that's, and then...
Right.
We fold. And then we fold, right?
Yeah, I mean, we should fold the flop.
We should just fold the flop.
Yeah, we all the diamond. I mean, I guess we can go very creative with like the ace and clubs, and the turn is a club, and we can bluff, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And this is not because it's, uh, it's final table, you would always just fold here, the flop.
Yeah, maybe I'm too tight.
No, no.
But especially on final tables, I should, we should be playing very tight, right?
Like for example, Ben, what, uh, like, uh, I, I did cap, I did like...
And then ace 9 suited.
Quite a bunch of, uh, study sessions with Zombie.
2x open and then a 3x.
But this is the first time I heard about developing, you know, about being limping more. And it makes so much sense, you know, in final tables.
Do we any, do we have anything else here with ace 9? No.
But I think it's a lot of, a lot of, in, in the stakes we're playing there, a lot of recreational plays.
The other guy is always calling.
But they don't understand the difference between calling and shoving.
Yeah, if we call, he calls as well, and I mean, ace 9 shoving is also not what...
But I guess it's up to us to identify these guys. And, uh... And like the outcome is gonna be pretty much the same.
Having this 10 big blind stack in the mix is really bad for us. Because now we have 36 and have to be super tight.
So we get queen 4, yeah, that's a fold.
Yeah, yeah, because you can easily fold.
Even queen jack would be a fold, for example, in this spot, on the button.
Yeah, yep. Just because of the fact that the guy next to us has...
The thing is, I, I always jump versus limpers in these cards.
Yeah, and the other guys that we raise into have like a lot more. They have 50 blinds and we have 36, so they can just go crazy on us.
I'm gonna be jamming my 5s and my 3s, you know, from the small blind.
To the big stack open. Uh, could we 3 bet it? 3 bet folded? Best fold. Because he's gonna open very wide, I, I, he should be opening very wide.
Yeah, but you can't, for example, 3 bet call ace king here, right?
Yeah.
That's the problem, 3 betting a lot, like you're only wrapping aces and kings and queens, but like, if you wanna do it, king queen is like the perfect bluffing hand for that, right? And I, I also think he, his range is gonna be super wide.
Yeah, so and if you 3 bet, you go just 6 or you go 7 or what, what is the sizing then?
6.5 is fine.
6.5, okay.
We just don't want him to call too much. We just wanna take it down pre. This is like his king 9 off, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I mean, against his range, he should be very wide, so he should be opening very wide, so if I 3 bet, you cannot do it every 2 hands, because then he will start shoving on you, but, yeah, I think we can, we should, I, we could, we could 3 bet the king queen off.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's very decent hand to 3 bet.
Yeah, it's probably one of the best, like ace jack office as well, I think, something, it's a bit, it's a bit similar hand and strength. Uh, a little bit better, but, yeah. That's also one I, I, I should see myself 3 betting as like ace jack off, um, and then folding to whatever he does, if he decides to jam.
Have to do it always, you can do it like 50%, just randomize 50% and then do it, fold the rest, you know?
And should I call here?
I mean... It's probably fine, but I think fold is fine too. I think fold is a bit better.
Getting faster and, uh...
Just nip it up until the 10 big blind stack is out.
Mute detecting, what's up?
Like if the flop is, for example, king 5 duse, and he's just gonna triple barrel you, what are you gonna do?
This card is good, eh?
Yeah, not, not much, I mean, eventually I have to fold and gonna lose half a stack.
Even though we didn't find a lot of, you know, tough spots like 3 bet ports and things like that, and it was most of the tournament like, uh, playing, played post, uh, pre-flop. Uh, it was, it, it still, it still has been a very interesting study and I've seen, I, I like, I, I got a lot of things out of this and just, I can imagine, you know, a lot of people as well getting, uh...
I don't know if you wanna see all the hands.
Like everyone else getting, uh, value from this. And that just stresses out how, how, uh, important it is to, uh...
Wait, for the other, other shorts.
How important it is to study with, you know, with good players, you know?
So it's still, uh, a lot of pressure on us, ICM wise.
It could also be a fold on the button. The ace duse. Ace duse would be a fold on the button, if it folds to us, that hand before. For the same reason again, just have to wait.
They can, they can put so much pressure on you that we cannot do really.
It's just not worth it. Like if you win like 4 big blinds, the situation doesn't really change. You have 36 big blinds, it's the same thing than you having 33. But losing 17 big blinds, for example, because you flopped an ace, check called and then check folded, disaster. You know?
Yeah, indeed. The same here with ace 7, for example, is gonna be the same. We're also not, never, not gonna open it, would, would it fold to us, yeah, okay.
Tight is good. Final tables.
That's what's wrong.
Um... Yeah, and gets it through. Ah, look at that, again in the big blinds.
Bad.
Oh, under, under the gun plus one, so I, I, I assume we just shove.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
You know, snap shove.
There is no, there is nothing else to do, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
But like, it's gonna be a super tough spot with like ace queen. So that's why we would tank a lot and then shove.
Yeah, we do get golds. And we lose to kings.
That's quite unfortunate.
Never lucky, right?
Yeah, nah, never lucky.
You know, we, we would, we win that fold, we're 3rd. And immediately, the guys on our left, we dominate them. I'm not by a lot.
Yeah, that's, that happens, right?
Yeah.
I wasn't very happy at the moment, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I, I think, I was, I was, I was definitely railing, I was railing, I remember this, huh?
You were railing, I know. Uh, yeah, so now we are last, very close with the other guys, so we are...
It's you and the cut off.
Yeah, he's gonna be all in earlier than I, than we are, but, yeah. We take shoves, we fold, gets the call, he doubles up with 9s. So now we are very last.
Wonder what our calling range in that spot is, and what would you call in the king queen hand?
Uh, in the king queen hand.
I didn't know that, Money, I didn't know you were caramelizing.
Short stack shoved.
Shout out to my man, Money, for being in the first line during these hard times for humanity.
What pairs?
10 days straight?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
I think you're gonna be playing Bogger for 10 days straight.
Jack 10s, 9s, you probably call as well.
But I could be wrong.
Maybe, yeah.
I think I would fold 10s there, maybe. You guys wanna run it?
Probably I would call with ducks, for sure, with 7 big blinds.
We cannot run it, I mean, yeah.
I can run the simulation.
What's the debate?
What would you, you call here, basically? What's the calling range for us if the short stack goes all in?
What pocket pairs?
I would... Probably 9s or 10s plus.
9s, yeah, I like that, I like that.
I mean, we are the short stack, so...
Yep.
I mean...
She is not short of the short stack.
Yeah, I mean... Like if we had, if I had, if I had 14 big blinds, I could probably even fold 9s here, I don't know. I mean, not 14, but if I had 11 or 12, I could probably see myself folding 9s.
I think that's gonna be a lot wider than what we think. If you put it into a...
1s plus, ace queen.
What is it, ace queen, 9s plus?
Yeah, but this is like GTO not adjusted, if it pushes 18%, which is reasonable. It's like ace 9 off, pocket 3s, ace duse, king 10 suited plus. Like the calling range is probably wider.
So I'll put it on screen. Um, okay, so yeah, 9s plus.
I mean, like, you, you, I mean, out of everyone in the world, you guys are allowed to complain.
I thought it was 10s plus ace queen.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah, ace jack is also pretty good, plus 0.2 is, uh...
I mean, this is dollar, right, not percent?
The thing, the thing is though, a lot, a lot of, a lot of people acting behind, like... That's, that definitely, I don't know, I don't know if ICM considers that, probably does, but, I mean...
They do, but they say that, that they basically never call, which is like a problem. You know, they say that we shove and he shoves, that they just fold like pocket jacks, for example.
Yeah, but I don't think they do, not with our stack.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think like the, the chip leader would fold jugs in this spot. And I don't think he should, chance of eliminating 2 players, adding, he's getting 3 to 1. No.
Yeah, I think, I, well, I didn't call because of the ladder effect, that's the only reason why I didn't call with king queen.
I think king queen is a fold, is a, is a easy fold, because it's a drawing hand, like... Like, uh, we have to hit, and sometimes it's not going to be enough if we hit, like it, we'd also have ace king or...
Yeah, but he could also have king jack, I think, and king 10 suited, and I mean, there are a lot more hands he's shoving that we, that we will dominate.
Yeah.
I don't think he should be though, I don't think he should be shoving, because he has more, I mean, we are shorter than, than he is.
Yeah, but he has first a big blind, so he's gonna be earlier than... I don't, you know?
I consented, but he should be shoving this, 18%. But you see, king 9, for example, makes 0.03 dollars, so we just never take this spot. The same goes with ace 9, always folding.
So this is, this is, this is what he should shove.
This is his shoving range?
Yeah, so we go like basically 4s plus, king 10, and some suited ace x, ace 10 off.
I still like the fold, still like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fold is correct, to, to ICM, it's, it's okay, it's correct.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah. Even, even king queen suited is a fold, nice.
Yeah, and not by, not by a margin, yeah, it's pretty big even.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2 dollars.
It's not even close, so... Yep, okay.
Oh, see ya, Money, see ya, yeah, bro, thanks for stepping, stopping by and say hi.
Like that.
Have a good night.
Oh, yeah, he doubles up, 9s to 10s.
See, this guy even called with 10s, I think he would still call with 10s if we called.
Yeah, I think so.
10s plus was the call. So if we both jam, they have to call ace king in 10. They are not allowed to call ace queen, for example.
So, yeah.
No, okay, good, gotcha. Oh, what did we do here? Jump.
That's super close, I mean...
Well, now that the other guy doubled up, I'm good with that. I mean, he doubled up, the other guy doubled up, it's not like we, you know... you know, it's not like we have, we are waiting for anyone to bust, we just wanna double up or or get busted, right? You guys seen?
Yeah, but there are so many players behind us, you know, that's a problem.
It sucks a lot, it sucks a lot, but what does ICM say? Like, this is superb, uh, interesting spot.
What the shoving range is here when it's sixty six.
Because you know what, there, there's one, another thing I, I tend to take into consideration in this pot. We are under the gun. Two hands later, we will have four bigs, they will be calling us with any two, so right? So we're going to be very short after that, and this is a good hand to just put it in before we are down to four bigs or something.
But this is very close, I mean, king jack off is just, just barely break even.
Barely even, right?
Yeah, and this is why people just call accordingly, right? Like if we do the ranges, like, they are not supposed to call, for example, pocket sevens. But yeah, it, it's close, but I would fold it. Just because people ICM punt, like you will see like ace king versus ace queen, and they just get it in, you know?
Would you, would you, uh, one more, it's, it's probably stupid observation slash question, but would you rather open jump or just leave some some like
Yeah, always leave behind.
Because maybe, um, three guys will go all in, you know? After you, like maybe you run into, I don't know, queens, queens and aces, and then you can fold and get a page on.
Yeah.
So
So we go like four big blinds here, and just like be happy if everyone folds. And if one guy shoves, we just call it off, if two guys shove, we can even fold. Depends on the guys, like if the sixty big blind stack shoves and the other sixty big blind stack calls, we just have to fold. Like the ranges will be kings, aces, you know, ace, king.
So, so probably raising like five point five or six.
It sounds insane to just fold two big blinds down then, you know, but gotta do it.
Yep, okay.
Because maybe, for example, maybe, uh, the guy, under, under gun plus one guy has, uh, I don't know, maybe kings, and he decides to shove, and then the guy from the small blind, the big blind, with twelve bigs, let's say he decides to call with aces. And somehow gets, gets busted, the guy on the right, so you end up with a, with a ladder and
Yeah, it's much harder though if they have like a lot of chips, you know? Like, I, I still think that the big blind would get it in with like ace queen, ace king in that scenario, if we shove and the other guy shoves. I don't think he folds ace king. But like if we open shove, and the other guy shoves, the sixty big blind stack shoves, I don't think he should call with ace king on the button, you know? I think he folds it.
Yeah, he should, he should be always folding, he's, I mean, it's a great spot for him.
Yeah, and that's why we basically, I don't know, can't call.
Okay.
And two big stacks golden.
But it's always, it's always, uh, smart to leave something behind, just in case, right?
Yeah, but not, yeah, like four big blinds, that you still have like some playability, not go to like six big blinds and then fold. You know, go to four big blinds and you still got two point six big blinds, that's good enough.
Ah, so four bigs is okay.
Yeah, that's good enough, like the big blind can't call white, right? It's not gonna call eight, seven.
No, no, no.
And you are all in, and on any flop anyways, so it doesn't matter.
Yep, okay, that's super interesting.
Right, move on then.
So yeah, we get it through.
That's good, we're up to nine bigs now. Like, how important it is for us right now to steal? That's super strong.
It is, we fold.
Uh, we just, we were just hoping the guy, the other guy to call.
We limp kings.
Yeah, I limp kings, um, we get shoved on, we call, of course. And we get
Correct. I remember this one.
Never lucky, man, holy fuck.
Well, that happened.
You know, it's, uh
Many final table.
I was waiting to double up here.
Yeah, I hoped as well for a double up, but didn't.
Fuck me.
You know what, uh, Scooter, overall, I don't, I mean, I think you, you, you played really well in this tournament, even though
I made some, some big points, like the ace seven hands. Uh, where I shove for twenty five bigs, that should never happen.
Yeah, but we all made, made mistakes, I mean
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I know, but that's really, that's not, that's not a small mistake, I mean, that's a
But, but what I, what I, what I noticed is that you are, you, you were not opening hands, you shouldn't be opening, and you were not, uh, you know, you were over, I think over
Good.
Yeah, like, like sizings, we didn't see a lot of that, we didn't see a lot of post flop play. Uh, and I think
Yeah, I was, I was short for a whole while, so yeah, I mean, you don't
And, and playing with you, uh, for over one thousand hands, I know that this is something that you will be working on, and you should also work on your sizings. Uh, we didn't see a lot of that, but other than that, I think you, you, you played pretty solidly, man, you, you took your spots, even now with the kings, I, I, I like the, you know we, I mean, you would never call to shove here, like, and we wanted to
Yeah, I don't think so, I, I don't think so, so if you, if you're shorts, you have it so many times that you limp and they shove on you, even with, with the craziest hands.
Exactly, exactly, they should be, they should be putting pressure on you.
Just because you show a lot of weakness.
And, I mean
I don't have to, I don't have to be balanced on this final table, I'm probably gonna never sit with these guys ever again on a final table. I hope so, but the chances are very slim.
What's up, Chakal? Thank you, bro, thank you for the host.
And especially, I, I don't know, I, Zombie, what would you do here with these hands, with this stack?
Depends on the, I mean, limping is a fun idea for sure, but I feel like I'm, I'm just like screaming after, I have aces and kings, you know?
Oh yeah, I was very happy, I can tell you.
Yeah, we all were.
Uh, I, I've, yeah. Yeah, this, I
I don't know the guy, go for the limp, sure, but if I like play with the same rack and I'm gonna start limping here.
Yeah, you can, I think you can only, I think you can only do these ones, right?
Yeah, and that also hurts my future game, you know, because they know I limp aces and kings, so I never have aces and kings.
Yeah.
I saw a guy, for example, that limps with like eight big blinds and a satellite with aces, and he's a good rack, and I just made a note of that and just folded my ace jack, for example. When I would always call the shove, you know?
Yep.
Just fucked himself by limping, basically.
Yeah.
But just, just because I know he only does it with aces, because he's a good player.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I mean, you have, you can, you can see it sometimes in the start, they have really decent stats and then they limp once, you haven't seen them limp any hands? So what do they limp there? And especially in early position, it's almost always aces. And then you just, you just know it. And then if you have ace king, you just limp behind, you see the flop, and if you don't, even if you hit the king, you have to be very, very careful.
Uh, guys, I have a hand from, uh, yesterday's stream, I would like to show you.
Yep, go ahead.
It's, uh, it's a hand I played in, uh, in the five fifty dip, dip stack mini in Party Bogger, uh, I had two hundred big blinds versus a guy that had like three hundred big blinds, and I would like to show you this hand. For mainly, uh, let's see if I can make this full screen. For mainly two reasons, first is to, to, obviously to discuss it, and secondly, to see how important position is. And so, oh, should I put sound here? I mean, can you guys see it?
No.
Yes.
I see it on stream.
Ah, yeah, I see it on the stream as well.
You have to see it from the stream, uh. Yeah, you, but you know what, I think I can I scream, no, I think it's better if you guys just, we got it from the, so we have jugs, and, uh, we this is like, uh, an eight max table, so under the gun plus one or middle position if you want. Uh, raises two point five x. So what do we do, two hundred big blinds?
Let's be that.
Do we three bet?
Yeah, then call the four bet.
So how much do we three bet? Is seven fifty, seven point five okay?
Eight, eight to nine, I would say, just because we are so deep.
Just because we're deep.
There you go, for the seven point five.
So should I, so should I also put audio just to go through my thought process, or should we just, uh, play it without audio? I don't know, can you guys see?
It's your thought process now, right?
Alright. Without. I'm just, I just turned off, so he goes to seventeen.
He goes to seventeen.
Yeah, four bets.
Yeah, I think we just call the four bets.
Yeah.
This is a flop. So like he goes fifty percent, right? So at this point, I, I think, okay, he has an ace, uh, if we just call sorry?
So his range is really strong, I think, here, I mean, what, what is his hand?
Yeah, like if he has
It should be, it should be ace, king, kings, maybe queens?
Yeah, that's what I thought, ace, king, king, queens, so
And sometimes it's like ace five as a bluff, but
So I, probably, yeah, so, so my reaction here, like, uh, you know, sometimes we just call because we're deep and then we evaluate on the turn, but I decided to take another route here. And I just may, see, I was ready to call, see my, I was ready to call, and then I was like, well, if he has an ace x, uh, hand, you know, I, I could still have aces, you know, I would call a four bet, wouldn't fight bet. Sometimes I would fight bet, but I think it's still, I could have aces or ace, ace king, so so I decided to take advantage of my position and my chip stack and just, uh, min raise him, you know?
I think we fold for flop.
Sorry?
I think we just fold the flop.
We just fold the flop.
I think I would fold as well.
But I felt that I can exploit, uh, a guy with kings or queens, and so this happens here, let's see. So now he calls, right, because it's a small, uh it's, it's, it's a small raise, I mean, I should, I would always call with, uh, kings or queens on this pot. So now we have, you know, a flash draw, although, you know, it would, it doesn't matter a lot, because he could obviously have kings with a heart or queens with a heart, or, you know?
Yeah, but if he has aces, you're always drawing dead here.
Yeah, if, if he has aces, we are drawing dead, so
He gets a flash draw, he has a flash.
Yeah, so I check back here, like I would check back my boats as well. I would check back my, my quads, my ten quads, you know?
What, what are your boots? What do you have? Only aces?
Only aces, only aces or, or even quads, I could have tens.
Yeah, you, ah, I don't think you call ten.
Being so deep, I think in position, you know
Yeah, we, we don't three bet four the pair.
Yeah, yeah, you see, you see the flop.
You should not call tens that often, then.
So at this point, you know, he just checks again. At this point, I think, uh, um, he doesn't check his aces, right, he doesn't check, check his ace uh, ace kings, maybe he checks his ace kings, but at this point, I felt that, you know, I can't go to a showdown, I think he has uh uh, queens or kings. So what do you do at this point? How do you, like if you want to bluff, how much do you bluff? Uh, do you ever bluff? Do you check?
On it.
So the only way to win this pot, it's a huge pot, so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to check, and I'm like, if you, if I had audio, you would hear me say, I, you, I could re-enter this tournament, right? So I'm like, I wanna, I really wanna make this bluff. I didn't wanna take this pot and make this one hundred and forty big blind bluff to get him off queens and kings, see if I can get him off a hand like that with my jugs, and then I just do it.
Yeah, I saw the hand on stream, but I mean, you say now it's a really big pot, but how big it is, it's, it's a hundred big blinds, so what did you invest at fifty two? So you only invested a quarter of your stack. The pot is not that huge, it looks huge, it's not that huge.
I don't like the tank. You don't tank like that.
We, we have, uh, a shitty bluff catcher there. We lose from anything. I think it's the best to give up here.
But don't we put him on the score, on the, on the
Yeah, I don't mind the bluff on the river, I think the flop is questionable.
If he has
We, we haven't, we haven't invested enough.
Yeah, but he has a weak ace at best, he never has a flush, he never has a full house, he never has a ten. Never straight.
If I was him, I probably make a call even with ace queen.
Well, what do we bluff then?
But would you four bet your ace queen?
The jacks is probably the only bluff we can have.
I think the bluff is actually really, is, is actually good, I think.
Yeah, but what we did on the flop is probably not that, that, that good, you know?
It's a really invested hand.
Like on the flop, do you, if you have, if you have aces on the flop, do you raise?
No.
You never raise, right?
Like pocket eights, maybe that, like twenty percent three bets pre?
Actually, actually, I like, I like what I did on the flop.
I, 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 I would bet sometimes, even with aces.
Actually, but he, yeah, but he leads the flop. I mean, do you ever raise? Do, you just call with aces, if you have aces there, you just call, and you let them bluff, bluff all the stack, and if he checks the turn, you bet, or you check behind.
But I, I, I can, I can just call with my aces, but I also, I, I would also, you know, uh, min raise to make me look like, uh, you know, to, to build a pot also, you know, and to make it look like I'm trying to exploit him. It's like, I don't know, I, it's
I like the min raise because, uh, that was a flash draw. And flash draw completes on the turn, check, check, and then you shove the river, so most of the times you can have, uh, a flash or, uh, a
How, how many flush draws, how many flush draws do you have? But you don't have any range? But you don't have any range?
With, uh, king queen, sometimes, uh, there are people who calls a four bet with king queen suited.
Yeah, but you should
Yeah, I know, but she
I wouldn't, I wouldn't try this with king queen suited, because
I, I don't think, I don't think you have any, you have any flush draw, realistically flush draw there.
I think
The only thing you have is, is like aces, kings, queen, tens, jacks. And that's, that's what your range is, and ace queen off, uh, ace king off, could, you could have ace king off.
It's very capped, your range is, is very capped, to be honest.
You, you never have any flush draw there, because if, if the ace of hearts wouldn't be there and it would be then you have the flush draws, but otherwise you, you'll never have them.
That's why I said that if I were, if I were him, uh, I, I probably made the call with, uh, ace king or ace I probably made the call with ace, king or ace, queen, maybe.
Ben says, uh, I agree with Zombie, you shouldn't have a raising range on, on flop, in my opinion. Uh, what hands do we have for value on flop that we call a four bet three? I understand you're going for an exploit. It's weird hand because at the same time, uh, what would you bluff?
I mean, it's, it's not that the hand is terribly bad played, that's not what it is, I mean.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I, I, I just...
I think the shove on the river is actually pretty good, but I just don't, I don't like the raise on, on the, on the flop.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the best thing, basically. The river shove is goo-, okay, that's really good, actually. But like the flop raise is not that good. I mean, I can understand if you wanna bluff, you just call and then you can bluff the turn, you know? It makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. Flop, you couldn't shove on the river. So what amount, how many big blinds do you need to bet there?
All in, or pot.
Okay.
If you bet like 30 big blinds, they just snap call you with ace, king, ace, queen.
Yeah, I would also not fold because you don't, only have to be right.
No, I don't have a raising range on the flop. But I like the idea of bluffing with the jacks. But I would just call and bluff the turn. Like if he has kings or queens, he's still gonna check the turn and then we can bluff. Which was like our main reason to raise the flop, right? To let him roll kings and queens.
Yeah, I wanted to represent like a... I wanted to represent like a big hand and then went with a ten on the turn. Uh, and also it looks like I'm trying to protect my hand from like flush draws. Although I'm not, it's a small raise, but I, I find, you know, checking the turn, like, I would check a lot, I would check all of my monster hands and hope that he catches something on the river. Like this is how I would play my master, I mean, not just me, because he does, obviously he, he doesn't know me, but like, The, the population would do that, uh, in my opinion. I don't know.
Yep, the problem is like people just don't four bet, ever.
Yeah.
I see a lot of guys just calling ace, king in that spot, and then his range is like aces, kings, queens.
Yep.
If you had ace, king, is it a call from him?
If he had ace, king?
Yeah. If you have ace, king, and a player, a player, uh, with the name Matrix, Makes a, a small, a min, a min raise on the flop, what do you do with ace, king there?
I call.
Okay, then you check on the turn and our friend Matrix, an unknown player, uh, checks back. And on the river, you will check again, for sure, and he shows. You don't call?
I would bet. I would bet. Um, that's because we might have, I think I might have ace, king as well, and has a hard time calling that. Also he has ace, queen, maybe he raises ace, queen like a random player and also I block fold, you know? If he has a full house, he's just gonna raise the river, so it's just gonna fold, you know?
Yeah, but...
Like if I bet like 30 big blinds, what, what is like the button player doing?
Yeah, and if, if you bet the, if you bet the river with the jacks, you're never gonna shove for bluffing.
If you are prepared to check call the river and our friend Matrix...
Yeah, but check call is worse, I feel like, because we don't have enough bluffs. Like we shouldn't do it with jacks, I'm pretty sure, on the flop. We don't really have jacks.
Will you bet?
Call or fold. I think fold is the best.
Will you bet fold on the river?
With ace, king?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, bet fold, bet fold is much, uh, makes much more sense than, than check folding.
Bet check.
Like, like, let's say this guy bets on the river, let's put it back, so...
Yeah, but you never shove in your act. Is it better to bet fold or, or, or check call?
Bet fold, because, look at that, he bets, how much would you bet here if you were this guy with ace, king? Like, like 35, 40 big blinds?
Yeah.
So if I jam over that big bet, then I, 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 I don't have a lot of bluffs anymore. So you can fold and know that you had the second best hand.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're ever bluff shoving when he bets.
Yeah.
Unless I have, uh, A monster hand, you know, like, uh, boats.
And it's good, right? Then he gives him, himself a better price to fold.
Exactly, exactly, I, I would not, I, I would not bluff.
In the spot, like, what do I do?
Like if, if he, if he bets anything, like 22 bigs here, I'm gonna be convinced he has like an ace, queen, ace, king type of hand. And it's gonna be very difficult to get him off that hand, like, even if I jam. So if, if he bet on this river, then I would have to like fold 100% of the times. But, but if he had ace, king and he checked, and I don't think he had ace, king. Like, in my mind, he had queens or kings, or sometimes even jacks, you know? I, as much as, you know, he could even have jacks. Because I don't think he does this with anything else, like, uh, king, queen or king, uh, queen, I mean, jack. He doesn't, I mean, people don't four bet enough these hands.
He shouldn't, no.
Should.
I don't think he c-bets enough though, with kings and queens. I feel like most players will see the ace, high flop and just check.
Yeah, I will.
But, but, but because, like, me included, I would c-bet, because, uh, I don't want to be exploited. Because when you check, people, like, like we said earlier, people take it as, uh, Weakness and I could exploit him, like, and I, and I, he did c-bet and I did exploit him. Or maybe I didn't, I don't know. We'll never find out.
I have to say in gas games, uh, I see, uh, many people to check out of position. Uh, you, you check so many times out of position than in position, so...
I think, yeah, I...
In my experience, there are so many good hands that can check on the flop. Even flush draws, even, uh, aces, ace, kings, queens, uh, kings. So by checking, you can't know, uh, what his range is.
But if I, if I have, if I have... I already know his range because it's a four bet pot. I mean, people do not four bet a lot.
You, you don't really know if he has ace or he has kings, queens or something.
No, you, you never, you never know exactly his hand, but you have, you, you know his range, right? He could play aces the same way and let me continue with my bluffs. So this is the chances I'm taking, because I know the only hand that is calling me here, apart from, they have hands, aces.
After your, after your turn check, I don't think you have ever aces here. After you both check the turn, you probably won't ever have aces. Or he does, he does never have aces.
And there is a flush draw out there. If you had a strong ace, you would, definitely.
I could think, I, I don't think there are any flush draws here. I don't think he has any flush draws, never.
Yeah, 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 okay, but, uh, a strong ace, uh, will bet on the turn.
Flash draws, you mean on the turn? Well, he could have like a king, uh, kings with a king of, uh, with king, but, but...
On the, on the turn he does, but never on the flop. He just never has.
No, no, never, never, never. It's, it's always a four bet pot here. I mean, in the States, we're playing a few...
Yeah, I, I was thinking about the turn.
If you play a four bet, uh, maybe it's, it's, it's almost always, uh, uh, Queens plus, I mean, jacks, queen, jacks plus, jacks, queens, kings, ace, kings, suited, aces.
And even, even if he has kings with the king of heart, I mean, are you still not happy?
No, because the, the board is paired and there are a lot of, you know, Even if I decided to three bet with eights or nines, I'm there.
Yeah, yeah.
And he is not.
And you still have one, 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 one combination of tens as well, so...
Like even if he has kings, I think, uh, the way the hand was played, he, he made the right fold. Like, what do, what do you bet at this? You just bet bluffs, and what bluffs do you bet? Queens and jacks?
She can't, she can't make a call there, uh...
He can't call and you only have two, I mean, you only have two hands of, of bluffs and it's jacks and queens, I think.
Ten.
But it's really capped, guys, uh. There are, there are so, uh...
Hope you get some rest, bro. Take care.
Little, no, there is ace, king, kings or queens. Uh, this is so capped at this point.
The ranges are super tight.
Yeah. So you shove and I think ace, king is a call there. If she had ace, king, I think it's a good call, but she didn't have ace, king. She has, she probably...
She has queens or kings or something.
Or, or queens and she couldn't, uh, call, obviously. So, uh, it's a little bit, uh, something like you gamble not to have ace, king there. Please have, please, please, uh, please have kings and fold.
I, 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 yeah, that was my, that was my, that was my thought process too. I, 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 I thought of myself that he would, he wouldn't check twice if he has an ace in his hand. Like I checked, uh, I checked back, so I gave him the opportunity to bet on me on the river and, you know, he didn't. So I am almost convinced that I can get him off any hand if I just shove there. And, and the, the, the reason I tanked a lot was because I was debating and I was talking as well. And like Zombie says, yeah, tanking is not good. But I would al- also tank my nuts there, like make it look like I have a decision to make.
Last second of your timing?
I didn't even notice that. For all I know, I, I, and, uh, the, the next hand I folded when I wanted, I think we can see the next hand as well. I wanted to call and I folded. Is it the, oh, this one I folded, you know, for sure, I, I folded, I got... I was gonna fold and I got time banked anyway, but I was gonna, I, I folded because of this guy calling. So this guy had an ace as well, I think it's jack, so we, we were losing to this guy as well. This guy had the flash.
I want also to say that I like, uh, your jam on the river, because if we say in a simple way what we beat, It's two hands against one hand that we lose from. We beat kings and queens and we lose from ace, king, that's all. So we have a good odds to jam there, uh, in a simple way. I don't know if you agree, guys?
Well, uh, it was the only way to win that, uh, from my perspective. And, uh, you know, it takes a, a big bet to make a big hand fold. And unless he was a complete, you know, he was completely, uh, Which I doubt that he would, you know, three, four bet with pair of sixes or sevens. Unless he did that, I think we got him to lay down at least queens, at least queens, probably kings too.
Yeah, but I don't think I call kings ever there, if you shove. Would you?
No.
I don't even call it on the flop.
Yeah, I, I...
Um, I agree.
You wouldn't call the min raise on the flop there?
I, I don't think so, at least. I mean, what are you min raising? I'm just dead versus every ace, you know? And versus tens, I'm dead, versus eights, I'm pretty poor, versus queen, jack and heart, I'm just like not doing well.
Especially the pot is not yet that big because, yeah, you're like 200 big blinds deep. You can easi-, you can easily fold kings there and wait for a better moment to, to...
And I also think that most players will just check ace, they are kings, you know? They don't bet it. So I think he had ace, king in that spot, like 90% of the time.
You think, you think he had ace, king?
Yeah.
Wow. How can you fold ace, king?
How can you bluff?
Me?
Yeah.
You told me to.
If you look at, I mean, put yourself in his po-, in his position and think about how you're gonna call ace, king there.
I'm trying to grow some balls. Give me a break.
It's really, it's really a difficult call to call there with ace, king.
Yeah, I think it's always a fold with ace, king.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't, I mean, even against the population, who does? Who shove jacks there? You do, and that's it, I think.
Yeah, maybe.
I, I mean, no, no, there are others that still do it, but I mean...
What, what, what hands do you shove there in the other perspective?
Ace, ten, ace, ten of clubs.
It's very marginal.
You don't have ace, ten.
Very marginal also.
I mean, if I, if I was in his spot and you shove, the only hand I put you on is aces. And that's the only hand that makes sense.
Why would aces raise the flop? And why would aces not?
Yeah, that's also true, yeah.
Like you're 200 big blinds deep and you only made it like 17, right? So why wouldn't you do it like 35? Stack the kings, you know?
Yep.
I don't know. I don't, I just don't think so that, uh, you fold that is ace, king there. There are not many hands that you lose from. I don't know, uh, it's my opinion, um...
Yeah, but I mean... Yeah, I, I don't know.
I respect your, uh, uh...
I think the bluff, the bluff is really good calling there with ace, king is not good, in my opinion.
Maybe I have already pressed so many times the calling button in gas games, that's why I'm saying this bullshit.
No, it's not bullshit, man. No, no one's saying bullshit. It's, uh, it's a matter of perspective. Like, uh, you guys have your own experience in the tables. I, that's, and that's why I wanted to bring this hand up, because There are a lot of different ways to play this hand, I mean, both of us, him and, and me. So, uh, I guess, uh, and I, and I, and I also, yeah, I, I thought that there are a lot of ways we could Discuss and go about the hand, like, I probably didn't, didn't play the hand the right way or the way I was supposed to, But that's what probably got him to fold also, you know?
I think, uh, the, the only mistake was the min raise on the flop, but if you just call on the flop, He would have check, uh, most of the time, uh, the same play and the river, uh...
Yeah, and then we can bluff. I like that a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, and you don't, you don't have to risk all, all of your stack there.
The thing is, the thing is, uh, I, I, I understand that, like, I understand that, I know that in, in terms of, uh, theory, you know? But, I don't know, there is one aspect of the game that nobody trains anyone. And I, I guess, I guess this is gonna, this is gonna sound really stupid. And it's, uh, the psychological aspect of the, of, of the, the psychological effect of even min raising. Like, or, or deviating from the right way to play. I'm not supposed to raise here with aces, but I'm just gonna, you know, min raise and make it sexy and, and make it Look like, you know what, um, I may, I may don't have anything, just call me.
Now you did it with jacks, but will you ever do it with aces? Will you ever play the hand to like this with aces?
I, I did, I did, and, uh, you know, I, I did, I, I did with the nuts, you know, and sometimes you get someone with a good hand to call you. Sometimes you get with someone, you know, with a... Like if there was an ace, I, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if I would do it.
Very stupid call by him, uh, with kings there. It's a very stupid call. It's a fold 100%.
Yeah, that's why aces raise on the flop is bad. Like we don't get any value anymore.
It's the same.
We raise with aces, we block two aces, so he has only one ace left. And he's probably not three-betting on off-suited ace, so only suited aces are left in the deck, basically. So like ace, king suited is the one combination that makes sense to like continue, or like ace, 10. But we always get it from ace, 10 anyways, if he four-bets it, you know? And he never folds ace, 10.
No, no, no.
He's gonna bet, and he's gonna shove, and he's gonna call.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be the hand with aces, if he has aces.
But now I see clearly what you guys are saying. Like, I would, yeah, if I had aces there, I shouldn't be raising. I, I see it clearly. I should just call and let him, you know?
Even with ace, even with ace, king.
Yeah.
But sometimes when you just call, people will try, will try double barrel, and sometimes triple barrel, so I have to be prepared to go with my bluff all the way. But min raising there, even, you know, we'll, we'll just, we'll just throw some, throw him off, and if he doesn't have an ace, he's gonna shut down. Does that make sense? Even though, even if he's, if he has a clear head, he's gonna think about that, like, oh, would he just raise me there with aces? But maybe I have ace, king, you know? So he could think, you know, like, you know, if he has kings, he could think, oh, he has ace, queen, and I'm losing, and it sucks. If he has queens, then he can also think that I have ace, king, and I decided to just flat call, because what is the point of like five-betting ace, king? So but just by raising small there is, uh, I think is... So our story doesn't make sense. That's what Ben says. So just by, it, it doesn't make sense, but just by min raising there, it throws him off his game. It takes a really good player to find, you know, the clarity to think, you know, there, like, oh, would he do that with aces? I don't know. I don't know. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm just...
I, I agree with that, that it would need a very good player to see that. I think it's easy for us here now to discuss this in like 25 minutes, but on the table, uh, I think a lot of people will miss that.
I think it's a clear fold for him.
And maybe that's why he called the ace, because, oh, he wouldn't do that with...
Ace, like, he forbets, right? What bluffs does he forbet? It's mainly gonna be ace, x. So we just, you know? If he forbets ace, 10 or ace, 5, sometimes, it's an ace.
Yep.
So we target a range that is like kings and queens only.
Yeah.
And we win this versus kings and queens always on the turn if he, if he gives up. He basically checks the turn always, right? Then we can just bet.
Hopefully, we face 5 suited in $5 tournament.
Yeah, nobody does, probably. Only a very small percentage.
That's why we are touching only with, uh, fold, uh, queens and stuff like that. I think so. No one puts plenty big blinds with ace, 5 suited out of position there, only with master.
According to Raise Your Head, though, uh, ace, 5 is a good fold bet bluff.
Yeah, I agree, but who does it in a $5 tournament? I mean, there are not, there are not that much players who, who gonna four-bet bluff, because you have to be balanced in a $5 tournament with a thousand players.
I tried it, and I always get five-bet shoved, so I quit. So I just quit at trying it. I, I think I just got one player to fold, but I think, no, I, it wasn't even, it wasn't even, uh, it wasn't even ace, 5.
The three-bet ranges of the general, of the, the general population are already really tight.
Yeah, 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 it's true.
So what, what are four-bet ranges?
10%.
I mean, I think the average three-bet percentage you see in, in like the bigger, bigger fields on the 440s and $5 tournaments, it's like always 3%, 4%, 5%. And then the good players, the good players have 9% and 10%.
The thing, though, uh, Skrull, is that when you play in Party Bogey, you play a lot of deep stacks, like 200 big blinds. You don't, you don't play that in, in, I, I, at least I wasn't playing that, playing that in, uh, in, uh, in Bogey starts. So I discovered that people three-bet a lot, a lot, like, uh, and I just, and I also discovered that I need to, uh, to work on my 100, 200 big blind game, because, let's, let's be honest, nobody really has an idea how to play 100, 200 big blinds, unless you're a cash game player. At least I don't, you know, if I'm honest with myself. And, and after I saw the video you sent today, they, I mean, I was surprised that it was mentioned. I mean, I wasn't surprised, obviously, but I was happily, uh, I was happy to hear that this was mentioned. And, uh, I don't remember his name, the person was speaking with Ben, he goes... Yeah, he goes, uh, "Well, with 100, 200 big blind deep, you just have to wait for the gifts to come at you. You don't, you know, you just play tight and wait for the gifts."
Yep, that... I, I don't think like we should, we should not study 100 big blinds deep and how to play post-flop and do crazy bluffs because of the, the percentage you win in total is just not enough. We should focus on playing our 30, 40, 20 big blind stacks.
I agree, I agree. I agree.
Yeah. And that's exactly what the, what the guy says, and, I mean, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna make sure that my 20, 30 big blinds, 40 big blinds plays pre-flop then, I mean, is gonna be on point. And then you already, and then you're gonna have a big edge on, on the average field.
Yeah, that's totally true.
And what, if you, if you watch that video, Jesus, that Skrull posted earlier today, it's, it's great value to watch it.
No, I didn't, but...
It's, it's, it's BenCB, and, uh...
If you have time, it's, it's a podcast, it's a podcast with BenCB and Pat Poker, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, he starts by saying that...
It's really, really interesting, yeah.
If I were to start all over again, I would just master my under-30 big blind game, and shoving, reshoving spots, and, you know, uh, pre-flop, you know? Pre-flop, shoving and everything, and just, uh, because, and just registering tournaments that, you know, and, and, and that I play that shallow, and just win, because people now go through a lot of, people don't study what they need to study to become, you know, to have an edge in the stakes they play, in whatever they play. They just study whatever everyone else does. They get piles over, and they don't know why they're doing whatever they're doing. They, they spend so much time working on, you know, post-flop, and what would pile do, and, and, and they don't take into consideration, you know, like, what really would benefit their studying, and...
I, I thought my, my pre-flop game was, was, was okay, but now I have the Raise Your Head scores, and I just know it's not good. It's just definitely not good enough. Though I also thought my biggest issues were post-flop, but it's not. I still make big mistakes pre-flop. And I shouldn't make it. And that's why, that's why we should study first pre-flop ranges and know them really, really good before we start going into post-flop. And of course, you have to know something about, you have to know something about c-betting, and you have to know something about sizing, but I mean, really in detail, you don't have to study post-flop, because other people make way more bigger mistakes than we do.
Yeah.
Post-flop is the basement. You have to...
If you have your pre-flop, pre-flop ranges mastered, it's gonna be so much easier post-flop as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure. I totally agree.
That's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna study them until I know them by heart, until I know pre-flop what I should do in 99% of situations, of 90% of situations, that I look perfect when I...
I agree. I agree.
So, yeah, um, I'm gonna go to bed, because in five hours I have to get up.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
First, I'd like to thank all of you guys. Thank, obviously, I would like to thank Zombie as well for, you know, for...
Thank you very much for having us.
For helping us so much with his insight. He's, uh, he's always, he's always, uh, his insight is always so valuable. And like I said, if I said it one time, I said it 1 million times, it's so, we are so privileged to have Zombie with us.
It's so, it's so nice that you are here, knowing that you are crushing the games, and for us it's so much value that we, I mean, you know what you're talking about, and that makes, makes, it's just words a lot. So thank you very much.
Also, a big thank you to you, Skrull, for, you know, putting yourself out there, uh, not being, you know, not being hesitant to show your weaknesses in front of the stream. I know it's, it's not easy to do it for the first time for anyone, and I do appreciate you giving us, you know, this whole, uh, study material, and, and you definitely added up to the value. And I will also, I also want to thank Jesus for, you know, being here with us and also giving us his perspective, because he's been playing like mostly from everyone of us, the 100 big blind game as well, and he's also been, you know, been a player for like many years, making his way of living as well, partially from Bogey, but also wants to become a fully independent financially, player.
Thanks, Matrix. Thanks, guys. So, I, I, I have to say that, uh, I want to thank you for being a part, uh, with you in this stream, because uh, I love what I heard. My game sucks with 20, 30, 40 big blinds, really. I have studied 100 big blinds plus, and uh, thanks for all the information you gave to me, to viewers, to everyone. Thank you, guys, for sharing all this info. I really appreciate it. I go in like...
I just, I am sure, I'm sure, like, uh, you know, people, uh, that stayed and sticked around, like Ben, like Hassan, Jackal was here earlier, and all the other people that were part of this study session, I'm sure, everyone took a little bit something with them, and this is the whole point of going through this, uh, I mean, going through a five-hour study session live is to help our community towards their, you know, goals, and I, and I'm, and I'm sure, you know, I'm, I'm gonna download this video, I'm gonna put it up there somewhere, I don't know, maybe YouTube or in a channel, uh, for, so people can, you know, watch it and extract some value from it. Uh, hopefully we can do this again next time.
Sure.
I would, I would, I would also, I would also love to...
Can listen pretty faster next time.
I would also love to go through Zombie's tournament, but if Zombie doesn't want to, uh, that's totally fine. I mean, there are a lot of people that would. We could do that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it would be great. It would be great. So we can get, uh, someone else also helping with, uh, you know, with reviewing the tournament. Probably we can get Zidane in. Alright, so thank you, guys, once more. Uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna be heading over.
Thank you as well, of course, I mean...
It's my pleasure, it's my pleasure. I'm, I'm...
You make this possible for us as well, I mean, for me, for me, it's the first time I did something like this, so it's been a really big help. Um, and it's you who makes it possible, so thank you very much.
It's my pleasure, and I'm getting as much as you are getting out of this, and maybe even more, so it's, I'm just glad it's a multidirectional, uh, benefit to everyone. So, alright, guys, we, this is it. Uh, just gonna be, we're gonna be heading to Giden's source. And I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Good night.